Reed Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
City Council Meeting of October 10th, 2011. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Karen Berry.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Present.
Joseph Demont.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 26th, 2011? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval was seconded by Councilman Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
I thank you. We have three proclamations tonight. I would ask that Mrs. Reed Ridge, please step forward and read the proclamation for Conflict Resolution Month. And Joe Cass is here. Commander Joe Cass is here to accept. Plus, we have some students from Reed Ridge High School. Please step forward.
Thank you, Mayor DiTulio. City Council, citizens of Reed Ridge, good evening. With a crowd this big, there certainly can't be any Monday Night Football this evening. How about that? Just joking, of course. I apologize in advance. I'm getting over a cold, so my voice is a little in and out, so please forgive me. Whereas conflict resolution encompasses mediation, arbitration, facilitation, collaborative decision-making, and other responses to differences; and whereas the conflict resolution processes empowers individuals, families, communities, organizations, and businesses to foster communication and devise solutions that are acceptable to the needs and interests of all parties involved; and whereas conflict resolution is taught and practiced by citizens in many school systems, universities, and graduate programs throughout Colorado and the world as a way of solving disputes; and whereas community-based programs fairly and equitably resolve neighborhood and community conflicts, thereby strengthening local relationships; and whereas professional associations of conflict mediators promote peaceful and creative resolutions to disputes, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jerry DiTulio, Mayor of the City of Reed Ridge, do hereby proclaim October 2011 Conflict Resolution Month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening to the council. The department supports a series of training classes that we do with the peer counselors at Reed Ridge High School that addresses conflict resolution and mediation and helping students and the student body work through conflicts that they have with the student body. And so it's really, I think, an honor, and we wanted to express our appreciation both on behalf of Hank Dowd and the school, and myself, for the proclamation. And we appreciate this being done for us, so thank you very much.
Our next proclamation is Make a Difference Day, October 22nd, 2011. I ask Mrs. Reed Ridge to please step forward and read that proclamation.
Whereas serious social problems concern our nation, state, and city, and threaten our future; and whereas connecting with others and working together through volunteer service can bridge the differences that separate people and help solve serious social problems; and whereas we, the American people and the citizens of the City of Reed Ridge, have a tradition of philanthropy and volunteerism; and whereas in 2010, 3 million people cared enough about their communities to volunteer on Make a Difference Day, accomplishing thousands of projects in hundreds of cities and towns; and whereas the City of Reed Ridge supports service and volunteering in our community at nonprofit organizations, schools, corporations, and houses of worship, families, friends, and neighborhoods serve together to make a difference; and whereas 2011 makes the 21st Annual Make a Difference Day held in partnership with Hands-on Network and USA Weekend Magazine; and the City of Reed Ridge supports a vibrant community to enrich the lives of our citizens, now therefore, Mayor Jerry DiTulio and the Reed Ridge City Council do hereby proclaim October 22nd, 2011, Make a Difference Day, and urge all citizens to participate in volunteer projects as we work together to meet the needs of their neighbors.
So I'd just like to make a quick comment about this. At a meeting that we were having for the Reed Ridge Feeding the Future Backpack Program, we were discussing ways to try to get more people involved in it. We have a high percentage of students in Reed Ridge area that go home hungry on the weekend, and the Reed Ridge Feeding the Future Backpack Program is a way to get food to two of these children so that they can come to school on Monday better prepared to learn. So during the discussion, Make the Difference Day kind of came up, and I really think that this is a great way for citizens to have an impact on their community. It doesn't have to be a huge, it don't have to be a large overtaking. You can do little things and make a difference for everyone, and so I would hope that everyone on October 22nd finds something that they feel passionate about and makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last acknowledgment is for a resident who's been here for many years. She passed away suddenly a couple weeks ago, and we wanted to acknowledge her as she's one of the founding mothers of City of Reed Ridge. So I'd ask her family members and Mo Kell, would you please step forward? Folks that knew Jeanne Merkel for many years, Jeanne and her family, please step forward. And I'm going to read the acknowledgment for Jeanne Merkel. This is acknowledgment for Jeanne Merkel. Longtime Reed Ridge resident and friend Jeanne Merkel has passed away. Over the years, Jeanne was involved in many issues with the City of Reed Ridge. Jeanne and her husband Cliff moved to Reed Ridge in the late 1960s and bought a house on Estes Street. She used to tell the story that right after they moved to Reed Ridge, there was a flood in her house which caused a huge rainstorm, which was caused by a huge rainstorm. The first mayor of Reed Ridge, Albert Anderson, came over to her house with the fire department and helped clean it up. Perhaps this is when Jeanne's admiration for the city began, as through the years she volunteered for many city causes. Among them, member of the original Reed Ridge City Charter Committee, leading the way to ensure that the charter reflected citizens' concerns. Served on the Reed Ridge Personnel Committee for many years. Mentor to many Reed Ridge citizens who were candidates for public office in Reed Ridge. Her advice was sought by many people, both within campaigns and within their roles as elected officials. Lifetime member of the Reed Ridge Historical Society. Jeanne had an impressive historical memory and could recall issues, events, and arguments for many years past. Active supporter of Crown Hill Park and Trail, which is now enjoyed by many citizens. Founding member of the Reed Ridge United Neighborhoods. Teacher and active, act teacher, and active in PTA for Womack Davis Elementary School. When the city ran a contest for a city motto, it was Jeanne who submitted the winning entry, "People create the quality of their government through participation or neglect." The motto is displayed in the entry of city, entry wall in City Hall and reflects the importance of citizen involvement in the democratic process, which she deeply believed and cherished. Jeanne was a gracious lady who gave her time, knowledge, and levelheadedness to many who sought her out. Jeanne loved Reed Ridge, and she was a very big supporter of our city. Acknowledged by Jerry DiTulio, Mayor of the City of Reed Ridge, and City Council dated this 10th day of October 2011.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm honored to accept this on behalf of the family. I do know that Cliff, Jeanne's husband of 40 years, who's not well, is watching this at home, along with the son, Scott Merkel. And I wanted to announce that on Saturday, October 15th, at 2:00 will be the memorial service for Jeanne. It will be here at Crown Hill. And then at 3:30, there'll be a reception at the Reed Ridge Recreation Center for Jeanne, and we do hope that all of you who knew her and appreciated her offerings and her years of service to the City of Reed Ridge and to her community and neighborhood will attend. Thank you.
I guess Jeanne was like a big sister to me, and I'd like to say a few words. Everything that Mayor DiTulio said, I say and echo again. She was always there for anyone with a level-headed response to any problem, and she had this wonderful ecumenical love for everybody, and you practically never heard a cross word from her unless there was some really good reason for it, and something that you would have said even if you were Saint Teresa, you know? I'm going to miss her terribly, and I'm going to get choked up if I say anything more, so thank you all.
Thank you. Mo, thank you for letting us know, and thank you for coming tonight. Just one quick, short story. Jeanne Merkel was over 90 years old, and I have an email list. I send out city updates. How much? Seventy-eight. Wrong person. She was a little over 78, and I had sent out an email indicating to folks that I had completed my licensure program at Redus University, and she took the time to send a little congratulations note handwritten, saying, "Congratulations for passing all the requirements for Redus University," because she was also a teacher. So she was a great person, and she used to like watching Channel 8 when we had the plays on from the Reed Ridge High School. So thanks again for Jeanne Merkel and all her service to the City of Reed Ridge. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So if you're here for public comment on any item not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record, and give us your city and your address. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Please step forward into the podium and spell your last name for the record, and please state your city and your address.
Dave Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R, 6161 West 29th Place, Reed Ridge. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the citizens to elect Karen Thaler for District 1 City Council. I have a few examples of why we should elect Karen for District 1. First of all, she's my wife. Second, a native. She has a vested interest in her home district of 1, and I think that, as she does, is very important to be successful as a city council person and as the city as a whole. I too am a native, and feel it's very important being part of that and watching it. You truly have a vested interest in that. Being born and raised in the district you are about to represent, you see all the ups and downs, and you want to see positive growth. Third, I think she's fair, a very fair person. She won't get bogged down in any partisan cultural cronyism, anything like that that'll get divides council some of the time. She'll do what's fair for everybody, and good for the district, and Reed Ridge as a whole. Tenacious. She's very tenacious. She uses whatever means to find all the facts. She'll get all the facts first before she'll do anything, and then make an informed judgment. She's like a sponge, constantly learning, always studying, trying to better herself. Fifth is age. Her age, I think, is old enough to see the past, to preserve it, but young enough to see a bright and prosperous future, a city you might want to retire in. So in conclusion, I feel that Karen is the best candidate choice for District 1 through forward thinking and a hunger for doing the right thing all the time. She will lead us down a well-thought-out path that will be beneficial for District 1 and all of Reed Ridge. Thank you. Unlike myself, I hope to count on your vote for her for City Council, District 1. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I'm a resident of District 1 and the Executive Director of Reed Ridge 2020. And I wanted to make sure that all of the residents and businesses knew about a couple of events that are coming up here in our town. One is next week, Thursday, October 20th. We're having Live Local Reed Ridge at Ceviche, which is one of our new restaurants in town. It's Peruvian. If you haven't been there, you should go. And if you're looking for an excuse to go, go on October 20th. We'll be there from 6:00 to 9:00 with entertainment and prizes and all sorts of things. The other event is our big annual event, Wines and Dines. It's a great evening of sampling of lots of restaurants. We have wine, beer at Copperfields. It's November 8th, so a week after the election, and we hope you'll join us for that. You can get all of the details on those two events at reedridg2020.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Officer Malloy, would you please close the door in the back so the noise doesn't come through?
Mayor, Council, City of Reed Ridge, I am Carol Salzman, S-A-L-Z-M-A-N-N. I serve as the Vice President for Community Development at Example Lutheran Medical Center and also as our Executive Director for the Example Lutheran Medical Center Foundation. And I was delighted to hear the proclamation that was read earlier for Make a Difference Day, and I'm here to tell you I have an opportunity. Coincidentally, we have an event scheduled at Lutheran Medical Center on Saturday, October 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00 o'clock. It's an opportunity for citizens, youth, associates, physicians to drop by the hospital and help us do a community cleanup on campus. We're particularly focused on tobacco and litter related to tobacco products, but we're looking just to do a general cleanup. If that's of interest to you, I'm going to work with Heather to get that posted on the website, but it's Saturday, October 22nd, a chance for you to make a difference in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record and give us your city or your address.
Last name is Allard, A-L-L-A-R-D. My name is Roland Allard. I'm here for one purpose only, and that's to complain about bicyclists over in Prospect Park. I hope everybody here is not mad at me. Anyways, they're kind of presumptuous. They think they can get away with anything they want to do. I was walking down 38th one day, I was standing there across the street, some guy rolled right by me, his handlebar just brushed my chest. Now the air turned blue when I called him. Anyways, I think these guys are taken a lot for granted. We have rights too. Now, I'm handicapped since I've been nine years old. I have neuropathy and diabetic, okay? Now, when you have neuropathy, you can barely have problems walking. I'm trying to build these muscles up. Now, I had to do this for exercise to keep those muscles strength, strong, but these bicyclists have an attitude problem. I've heard that many, many other people besides me are complaining about it. I'm asking the chief to do something, and nothing against him personally, but I have to thank the city council, the mayor, for letting me come up here and talk, especially, let me see, I have to write this down. Karen Berry and Davis, I'm going to read them in writing. Anyways, I thank them, okay? Now that's it. All right? I said enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Stapleton. I'm Chair of the Board of the Senior Resource Center, and I'm just here to wish, to welcome all of you, and also to welcome you to our ribbon cutting at the Senior Resource Center, which is Thursday, October 13th, and we begin at 4:00, and the actual ceremonies will be at 5:30. So I hope you all can attend. This is a new building that we have finished construction, and it certainly is a plus in the Reed Ridge area and for our seniors. So I hope you can all attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to my husband, I don't need to recite part of my speech. He's already taking care of that. Good evening. As you know, my name's Karen Thaler, and I am running for Reed Ridge City Council in District 1. First, I would like to thank Reed Ridge United Neighborhoods for hosting the candidate forum, and also for the city for providing the venue. I would like to share some information about myself so you can be informed before you cast your vote. As my husband stated earlier, I am a District 1 native. He is also a native. We definitely have roots here. I attended Stevens Elementary, Reed Ridge Junior High, and graduated from Reed Ridge High School in 1987. I'm a licensed cosmetologist in both Colorado and California. For many years, I had my own business providing hair services for homebound senior citizens. I am also a graduate of Trim International School of Floral Design. My current job is landscape management. My community involvement includes two years on the Carnation Festival Committee, Reed Ridge Civic Academy, Reed Ridge Police Citizens Academy, and the Walk and Watch Program. The last five years, I have represented Reed Ridge as a state finalist for Mrs. Colorado. I average 60 events a year, both in and outside of Reed Ridge, including Veterans Hospital, grand openings, fundraisers, and reading the proclamations. In additioning to community events, I also write a column titled "Hometown Pride" for the Neighborhood Gazette. If elected, I will do my best not only for District 1, but for the entire City of Reed Ridge. I am not afraid to stand up for what I believe to be fair. I have a great respect for the dollar and the manner in which it is spent. I value and welcome citizen input because ultimately, it's the citizens who define a city's success or failure. That being said, I would like to address the situation regarding my campaign. Last Thursday night, a campaign banner of mine was stolen from 32nd and Harlan, three foot by eight foot, so not a small sign by any means. It had only been up for five days. Several of my yard signs have also been reportedly stolen along 38th Avenue. The Reed Ridge Police are aware of these thefts, and reports have been filed. In my opinion, a thief is without a doubt the absolute lowest member of the human race. In the event this is an act of a campaign opponent, I urge you to consider this: you are not just violating my campaign efforts, but my campaign supporters as well. A great deal of money is invested in campaign advertising, and in reality, you are stealing from the very people you claim to want to represent as a proposed elected official. If any person or persons has an issue with me or my campaign, I ask you that you please deal with me directly. I have been more than open with providing my contact information to the public. Once again, I can be reached at 303-587-4871. I have received a lot of positive feedback from citizens regarding my campaign signs and slogans. Therefore, I tend to believe these are strictly acts of dirty campaign politics at its finest. If anyone has any information regarding these thefts, please do the right thing and notify the police. Again, my name is Karen Thaler, and I ask for your vote this evening. Thank you.
My name is Gina Hallisey, spelled H-A-L-L-I-S-E-Y, and I'll make this very brief. I know you have a very long meeting. I'm here to represent the Zoppe Italian Family Circus. I'm going to lighten the crowd for about three minutes. I'm the tour director for Colorado. Zoppe is looking for a home in the Denver metro area, and we think the City of Reed Ridge with its revitalization plan would be a perfect site for this family circus. So I'm going to leave you with information, because there's no way we can go through all of this. Pass that along. But just to give you a quick snapshot, the packet is complete. It's a full packet as if it were requests for an RFP. It has event information about my company, Get Connected Events, my background, the history of the Zoppe Italian Family Circus, which has been in operation since 1842. This is the seventh-generation circus that wants to come to Colorado, and they have been here. The dates that Zoppe is available is in there. For 2012, a proposed timeline, a fact sheet on a circus camp for kids, which is a very successful thing to add to a recreation district, a tech writer for the circus, and a proposed budget, of which I have details if needed, if I could get into a study session at some point. There's just three things I want to expand on real quick, to let you know why I think it's important for your city to look at this circus as a possible marketing tool with all that you have going on, and they are looking for a home, and this would be a great marketing tool for a city to bring people to your city for a special event. A lot of people use special events as a marketing tool to get people to their town or their city or their business. And the history of Zoppe, they started in 1842, and the seventh generation is still performing the old-fashioned, one-ring traditional circus that families love to attend. So I would hope that you would, all of you that are in the room, you should go look them up, zoppe.net, it's Z-O-P-P-E dot net, and check them out, and if you think you might like to have them in Reed Ridge, maybe you can support this. I also put in there a budget for a two-week program with the camp in between, so that it becomes a signature event, and I hope you will look through it and give me the opportunity to come back sometime and visit with you more on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gina. Have you been able to take a look at the Reed Ridge Middle School parking lot since you passed?
Yeah, I will fit there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment before we move on to the irregular agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight? Seeing none, I would ask the folks to please, one more time, to silence, to turn off your cell phones. This is a city council business meeting tonight, so I'm also going to ask folks to be respectful of each other, no clapping, booing, or cheering. This is a business meeting where council has to make some decisions tonight, and so your cooperation will be very appreciated if you do not boo, clap, or cheer, or try to intimidate anybody on the dais or in the crowd. Also, if you're here to speak tonight, please speak to the council rather than to the crowd, because council will be the one making the decisions tonight. So please speak towards the council when you're speaking tonight. Okay? Thank you. Moving on, the consent agenda. Councilmember Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda, 1A. Motion to approve payment to Wright Tree Service Incorporated of Brighton, Colorado in the amount of $15,460.50 for services rendered and invoiced in August 2011 under RFB 0910 Forestry Maintenance Services Contract. B, Resolution Number 34, 2011, amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $13,560 for four patrol vehicle mobile data computers, and approving the purchase of 10 patrol vehicle mobile data computers for a total amount of $37,559.50. C, Motion to approve payment to Lakewood Plumbing Incorporated of Reed Ridge, Colorado in the amount of $22,999 for emergency repair of the municipal building fire sprinkler suppression water line. D, Motion to award RFP 1139 multifunctional copiers to All Copy Products Incorporated of Denver, Colorado in the amount of $64,000. E, Resolution 40, 2011, closing the Richards Hard Estate Fund 35. F, Resolution 35, 2011, approving a petition to include the public right-of-way within Clear Creek Crossing subdivision filing number one in the Applewood Sanitation District. Is motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda. It was seconded by Councilman Sang. Discussion on any items? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff and the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments germane to the issue. This is a city council business meeting tonight, so please no cheering, clapping, impugning of motives, or booing. Please treat all speakers as you would like to be treated, as always, and in an effort to save time, since council needs to make some decisions tonight, please feel free to state that you agree or disagree with the previous speaker. Please keep all comments germane to the subject at hand. Thank you. Item 2 is Resolution 38-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember J.
Resolution 38, 2011, a resolution adopting the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan, and by such adoption, amending the Reed Ridge Comprehensive Plan. At issue, 38th Avenue between Wattsworth and Sheridan is one of five priority areas for reinvestment and revitalization in the city's comprehensive plan, Envision Reed Ridge, and the city's economic development strategic plan. Envision Reed Ridge recommended the city develop a specific corridor plan for 38th Avenue. The attached resolution recommends adoption of the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. The corridor plan establishes a vision for the future of the street and includes specific recommendations and implementation steps to guide its revitalization in the coming two decades. The plan was developed based on extensive public outreach, including input from a stakeholder committee and three community input sessions.
Move on to staff presentation. Please spell your last name for the record and state your position with the city.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ken Johnstone, Director of Community Development. Pleased to be in front of you this evening. Wait for this screen to get down. To present the recommendations on the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan, which is proposed as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, Envision Reed Ridge. Do have about a 20, 30-minute presentation tonight to really give you just a framework of the plan. Obviously, there's a lot of content in the plan. Hopefully, you've all had the chance, I'm sure, to review the document. We've reviewed a study session as well, but do want to give a decent overview, particularly for the benefit of the audience. for the benefit of the audience. So the presentation tonight, I want to just give a little background as to the purpose of this effort and how this started, what the intent was. Spend some time talking about the planning process that we've had to get before you tonight with the recommendation, and talk about that public outreach. Hit some of the major plan recommendations. We won't be able to go into those in a great deal of detail this evening, though we'd be pleased to answer questions. And then spend a little more time on one of the significant components of the plan, and certainly one that has garnered a lot of public attention, which is the road diet. Specifically, talk about the traffic analysis that we did at the outset of this planning effort, some case studies of other communities across the country that have done similar road diet efforts, what the public input that we heard on that road diet was, and what some of our short- and long-term recommendations are in terms of that specific component of the plan, as well as implementation in general. And I'm remiss in introducing Sarah Showalter and Sally Payne, who are in the front row in the audience, who served as co-project managers. So I'll be here, given the presentation tonight, but they'll be here to answer these detailed questions, I'm sure, as needed. So the purpose of the plan, Thirty Eighth Avenue has been a high priority for the city for a number of years. There certainly have been a number of different previous planning efforts. When we adopted Envision Wheat Ridge, the citywide comprehensive plan in 2009, one of the specific recommendations was that we go through the process of actually doing a corridor-specific plan for Thirty Eighth Avenue. Subsequent to that, in late December of 2009, Wheat Ridge 2020, in cooperation with the city, commissioned an outdoor, outside group of experts to come in and make an initial assessment of Thirty Eighth Avenue. That group was a partnership with DOLA and Downtown Colorado, Inc. They produced a report called the Community Revitalization Project Report, and that, too, made some specific recommendations, but also that we really needed to get a specific vision for Thirty Eighth Avenue through a corridor planning effort. So the intent of this planning process was to really try and get more detailed into what exactly is Thirty Eighth Avenue. It's long been mentioned that it's the city's main street or has that potential, and to really establish what that vision is. Secondly, to really focus in on what public and private things we can do to realize a vision for revitalization on Thirty Eighth Avenue. And then, very specifically, one of the things that we wanted to do was to look at the concept of a road diet, which essentially is the concept of reducing the vehicular capacity of a roadway in exchange for other benefits, and we'll go into what those might be. The Community Revitalization Report had suggested that we look at that possibility. The planning process, obviously, always an important part of getting a corridor plan or any plan in front of city council. As we often do, we utilized a stakeholder committee. There was over twenty members on that stakeholder committee. That was a group that was appointed by the mayor and council almost a year ago. They held four meetings, and they really served as a sounding board for the recommendations that are contained in the plan, as those evolved through the planning process. Also very important was the more general public input through public open houses. We were fortunate to receive funding from Livwell Wheat Ridge in the amount of approximately $12,000 to host three community input sessions, and had great participation from the public at large in those meetings. Over six hundred people were on our mailing list. Obviously, we do notices for those on our website on Channel Eight as well. As always with planning projects, we dedicate a page on the website so that the public has access in that manner as well. This has been before the Planning Commission in a public hearing recently, and the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval of the plan to city council. Next, I want to hit some of the major plan recommendations, again, in kind of summary fashion. One thing that I think is a pretty interesting part of the plan that evolved through the planning process was the idea that Thirty Eighth Avenue from Wadsworth to Sheridan is a pretty long stretch of road. It's about a mile and a half, and the idea of being able to have that as be one single main street is probably going to be hard to achieve. So we wanted to break it down into parts, and we also took a step back and said, you know, we already have the Wadsworth Town Center concept that's been adopted in previous planning efforts and focused on Wadsworth from Thirty Eighth to Forty Fourth. We thought we could really build on that, and there's revitalization efforts in that corridor already underway. So the concept of focusing a main street adjacent to that or connected to that at the western end of Wadsworth was something that emerged early in the process. So the Main Street District is really a focus, building on some of the existing buildings in that area, which were already pushed up to the street. There's already existing on-street parking in portions of that area. So that's the concept of building the main street in that location initially. There's an idea that residential could really benefit the area, that more households mean more shoppers, mean more of an eighteen-hour-a-day activity on the corridor. So the idea of doing residential on that middle portion also emerged. And I should note that both for the Main Street District and the Residential District, those aren't exclusive. Residential uses are certainly appropriate in the Main Street District and vice versa, commercial uses in the Residential District. And then, lastly, I think we acknowledge that at the Sheridan end of the corridor, we have a pretty successful commercial area. There's the existing streetscape improvements, and those, you know, we just wanted to embrace that area and really see that as largely sustained as it is, a successful commercial area. The recommendations in the plan are really focused in these three areas: roadway design and the image of the street, land use and urban design recommendations, and then economic development and marketing recommendations. And these really all come together to form the revitalization of Thirty Eighth Avenue. So in terms of land use and urban design, a series of important recommendations in that regard, we think it's important to move forward with the mixed-use zoning of the corridor. When the mixed-use neighborhood zoning was developed last year, it was certainly anticipated Thirty Eighth Avenue could be one of the corridors where that would make sense. Second, that we design and eventually build comprehensive streetscape improvements along the remaining portions of Thirty Eighth Avenue. Third, we believe the grant and loan programs have been very successful in revitalizing Thirty Eighth Avenue to date, and that those should be continued. Infill redevelopment, again, initially focused on that main street portion of the development, is going to be critical to the revitalization efforts. Another unique concept that came up in the planning process was the idea that there might be an opportunity for a more significant civic center component on Thirty Eighth Avenue. And I have a graphic that we can go through that in some more detail. So this is a bird's-eye perspective of Thirty Eighth Avenue or a potential future for Thirty Eighth Avenue. Thirty Eighth Avenue running here and Uppham running here. There's the existing middle school, the existing fire station, obviously Wheat Ridge Cyclory, a very successful, iconic business in the Denver metro area. The idea is that a civic center component, a potential city hall or other cultural facilities in this location on some underdeveloped lots, could be really a catalyst to create more activity on Thirty Eighth Avenue on a daily basis and bring people to the corridor that then could live there, could shop there, could eat there, et cetera. It's certainly not the first time something like this has been suggested. I think you look around the Denver metro area, and you can see plenty of examples of communities that have used some sort of a civic component, whether it be a city hall or a library or some other cultural facility, to really serve as an anchor to a redevelopment, whether it be Lakewood or Inglewood or Lewisville. I think those are all great examples of cities that have made an investment, and it would be a significant investment, and that's something that'll need to be reviewed further, but to catalyze the redevelopment of an area. We believe that the frontage along Thirty Eighth and from the middle schools underutilized, and we've certainly started to have those conversations with the school district, but that there could be some opportunities to redevelop, in partnership with the school district, portions of that frontage on Thirty Eighth Avenue. So we're pretty excited about this, as having a potential, acknowledging that it's a lot more conversations to have in terms of what that costs and how that gets implemented. Economic development recommendations are obviously critical. Another big part of the recommendations coming forward in this plan is that there needs to be a leadership committee, that if Thirty Eighth Avenue is going to be successfully revitalized over the long term, that you really need a grassroots effort to lead that. Property owners, business owners, certainly a role for the city, and other external organizations with the city, such as Livwell or Wheat Ridge 2020, that have a vested interest in the revitalization of Thirty Eighth Avenue. I think this second bullet, this theme has come up repeatedly, which is that, you know, you really need to comprehensively brand and market the corridor collectively as a group to be successful. A business retention plan, I think that's always important for the city. I mean, that's a part of our citywide strategic plan in terms of economic development, but there are a lot of successful businesses, some that have been there for forty or fifty years, some that have been there for a few months. But we need to keep those businesses, and I think any economic development expert would tell you that the best way to succeed in economic development is to keep what you have and grow it. The last bullet is promotional materials. I mean, I think that really just builds off this idea that you need to market and brand the corridor. Last, I want to, again, spend a little more time talking about the roadway design. This was, going into the study, we knew was going to be a critical part of the study, and this concept of a road diet. What that is, as I mentioned before, is really the idea of taking away some of the vehicular capacity of a roadway, if that makes sense from a traffic standpoint, to realize other benefits, such as enhanced streetscape or enhanced sidewalks, or perhaps on-street parking or bike lanes. It was a recommendation in the CRP report, and one that I think a lot of people latched onto and thought, hey, you know, that's a really interesting idea. If we want Thirty Eighth Avenue to be a main street, you know, it ought to be more pedestrian-friendly, and it may be, while parts of it are today, it's probably not as pedestrian-friendly as it needs to be to really be the main street that's being envisioned. You can also hopefully achieve a higher level of safety. Reacher has shown in some of these examples that you have fewer accidents, and therefore a higher level of vehicular safety as well. And ultimately, what all these concepts are moving forward, whether it be any of the recommendations in the plan, including the road diet, is to make Thirty Eighth Avenue vibrant and economically successful. That is certainly our goal in considering this. Going into this, we did look at several case studies from across the country. Not going to go into these in detail. We did go over a couple of these when we were in front of you last week at the study session. What we found, and this is, you know, fairly much across the board in the research that we've done, is that we've seen increased property values when things like these road diets have been successfully implemented. Again, fewer accidents and increased safety. Generally speaking, little to no traffic diversion. So I know some, there's certainly fears that, you know, if you reduce the capacity, that people are just going to go elsewhere, and that's going to be bad for business, and obviously, we're sensitive to that. We have not seen that there's a lot of traffic diversion, really. We've seen that the traffic counts remain very consistent even after implementing some of these reduced vehicle capacity recommendations. So going into the traffic study, we had to make some assumptions. We knew we were going to be doing a traffic model, and the traffic model had to have a growth factor in it. You can see in this graph, the dots represent actual traffic counts, average daily counts, dating back into around 1975. I think you'll notice that the cluster is fairly consistent, that they've been, the traffic counts have been roughly between sixteen and eighteen thousand over the years and haven't increased a lot. We did do a growth trend based on historical, those historical trends, and that's the blue line that you see, the blue dashed line moving forward. We wanted to be more conservative in our analysis, so we assumed a higher growth factor, which represents about fifteen percent. We vetted that growth assumption with Dr. Cog and other bodies, so we feel really good that that's a conservative approach to what future traffic growth would be on Thirty Eighth Avenue. The traffic analysis results, and we do have Carl Buchholz from Mueller Traffic Engineering here tonight. If you have more technical questions, he would certainly be able to answer those. But what it found essentially was that a three-lane roadway is feasible from a traffic perspective. It's not feasible for the full stretch. It's feasible from roughly Uppham to Depew. As you transition out to Sheridan and Wadsworth, given the importance of those intersections and the traffic that moves on those adjacent roadways, you have to keep essentially the existing five-lane sections in those locations. The traffic study also said that Pearson-Harlan, two other major intersections along the corridor, you would need to keep right-turn lanes. You'd need to keep bus-turn pullouts to make the traffic move acceptably. I won't get into a lot of traffic jargon, I guess, but we studied traffic diversion, which means would traffic go someplace else if you reduced the capacity of Thirty Eighth Avenue, such as Thirty Second or Forty Fourth? What we found, that by and large, it wouldn't, that there would not be a sufficient advantage for a driver to go to those parallel roadways to justify changing your route. And then, again, not too much jargon, but we also analyzed level of service, which is kind of the typical way that you measure whether a roadway is functioning properly, and there's different letters, and I'm not going to get into those as to what roadway level of service is. In a nutshell, from a traffic engineering perspective, what the analysis said was there's an acceptable level of congestion. Will there be more congestion? Yes. There will be, you know, it'll take you more time, particularly morning and evening rush, to get from Sheridan to Wadsworth or Wadsworth to Sheridan with the reduced lane capacity. Our analysis showed that anywhere between twenty and forty seconds of additional delay, that decreases the level of service slightly at some of the intersections, but again, within the thresholds that are deemed acceptable from a traffic engineering standpoint. And again, I'll defer questions to Mr. Buchholz, should you have them. Once we determined that it was acceptable, that we could talk about doing a road diet, and it wouldn't lead to an unacceptable traffic situation, the next question really for us was, you know, what would the public think of that? I mean, would there be support for that? The consensus that we received, and it was not unanimous, but the consensus that we received, it was that people were very excited about the idea of doing this for a variety of reasons. So the next question then was, well, if you reduced one vehicle lane in each direction, what might you do with that additional pavement or right-of-way? And we essentially gave the public three choices. You could do A, more sidewalks and more amenities. So amenities such as, you know, maybe enhanced brick pavers, or certainly landscaping, or seating areas, but things that are more oriented towards the pedestrian. Two, you could consider added parking in some locations, which could be a benefit to, for two reasons, really. Could be a benefit for the businesses that may need parking now and in the future. And two, you know, parking can serve as kind of a buffer, so that if you're a pedestrian, you're separated from the moving traffic by a row of parking, which makes it a more pedestrian-friendly environment as well. Another thing we heard loud and clear from the public was they wanted some things to happen sooner than later, and they understood that maybe a full build-out or a retrofit of Thirty Eighth Avenue would be expensive, would have to be designed, would have to be funded. You know, those are difficult decisions for the community to make decisions on, but they wanted to see some short-term successes. And based on that input, we'll talk a little bit more about some short-term implementation things that we think can kind of test the waters as to whether, you know, some of these road diet things will be successful for the corridor. And lastly, in terms of the public input, we heard that varying was good, too. You know, it didn't have to be one solution fits all. You know, you didn't have to only do parking on the corridor. In some districts, you could do parking, in some, you could do more amenities. You get the picture. The one thing that we heard people didn't think was appropriate was biking, oddly enough. Obviously, this is a great biking community, but I think the consensus was that while it's not inappropriate to bike on Thirty Eighth Avenue, or wouldn't be in the future, that it's just, there are better, there are other parallel corridors that are better, whether it be Thirty Second Avenue, which is already a well-established bike route, or Thirty Fifth Avenue, which connects in as a bike route into Denver. So that's the recommendation, was that added amenity zones were the highest priority, amenity zones and sidewalks, and parking was the second priority, and that we could do a mix of those, depending on where you were on the corridor. This is a graphic of what is coming forward in terms of the actual road diet recommendations. There's really three districts that are labeled one, two, and three on this graphic. The first on the west, again, from Uppham to roughly Newland, would be considered this main street. And in the main street road diet area, we would restripe to this three-lane section, and I'll have a graphic that shows that in a moment. So a center turn lane and one through lane in each direction, and then you'll have an extra area of about nine feet that you can do something different with, and what our ideas are going to be is that we can do some what we're calling retrofit amenity zones. retrofit amenity zones. And again, I'll show you that in a moment. In number 2, which is the residential road diet area from Newland to Harland, so that would be the area where the city has not done any streetscape improvements to date. In that area, again, we would restripe to the three-lane section, and you'd have, again, approximately a nine-foot extra area. And in that area, for the residential district, we're proposing to do landscape planners, as well as some additional parking potentially as well. And in the third area, because of the great existing streetscape improvements that have already been done, we're not proposing to change those. All we're proposing, that in that area, you would do the restripe to the three-lane road section. And then again, at either end, transitioning out back to the five-lane sections. So this is a graphic that shows that Main Street restriping, what we're calling the retrofit. The assumption that we're using in this retrofit is that it can be done from the existing curb to curb, so you're not disrupting the existing improvements essentially, you're keeping those in place. So you can see a shared center turn lane, and then a one-lane in each direction. And then this extra, as I mentioned, nine-foot area that you could do something different with, such as what we're calling either parking or temporary amenity zones. Showing an eight-foot walk and back on either side, in some cases, in most cases, that could be done within the existing 60-foot right-of-way. That's kind of the typical right-of-way that exists out there right now. In a few instances, there's more than that, but there's typically not less than that. And then, so that temporary amenity zone, this is an example, there's really a lot of these nationwide. If you do some internet research, I think you'd be amazed to see how creatively people are looking at reusing some of these spaces. We chose a local example, and one that was actually spearheaded up in Lewisville by their downtown business association. Lewisville has a great little downtown, as I'm sure many of you are aware, but they don't have wide sidewalks. And not enough of a sidewalk in the existing condition to be able to really have outside seating, which a lot of the downtown businesses wanted. So the downtown business association, in cooperation with some grant funding and some, I think some private money, purchased these temporary patio areas that essentially transitioned rather seamlessly onto the existing sidewalk, and provided these businesses, and there's many successful restaurants, now finally with an outdoor seating area, which they had never been able to have before. So pretty exciting, you know, to see how you can, you can see obviously the landscaping as well, how you can repurpose the street. Now, these go in, they come out, they're seasonal thing, and, you know, we think it's a pretty exciting opportunity. The second, then, section is in the residential district, number 2 back on that graphic, so not where there's existing city streetscape improvements, but in that area from Harland to Newland. So what we're showing here, again, same thing, center turn lane, one lane in each direction. And then you have this, again, approximately nine feet within the existing curbing that you can use differently. Because there's probably less of a use for maybe something like an outdoor seating area, as an example, we're proposing that a landscaped area could be created, basically carved out of the existing asphalt, without disrupting the stormwater flowing there. This is an example of that, I think a good one, you can see, it's probably about the same dimension. You know, this is approximately a seven-foot area, so an area that, you know, hopefully you can actually get street trees and things to succeed in terms of landscaping and grow. And then behind that, you can see how these landscaped areas begin to define and protect additional parking, which if infill residential occurs, townhomes, for instance, there may be a need or desire to have some on-street parking for visitors, for instance. So we think that could be definitely very useful parking. As I mentioned before, you know, we heard from the public that they wanted to see some things happen. So we're proposing some things that could happen in the 2012 budget. Obviously, that's still under consideration by council. But the proposed road diet, short-term, in 2012, would be to do the restriping from Upphum to Depew. So that's both in the Main Street District and the Residential District. To create those temporary amenity zones in Main Street, we'd have to work with property owners to determine what exactly made sense, and which properties that could occur adjacent to. The retrofit planners in the residential district. And then also, a demonstration curb cut consolidation. So we've budgeted to do a few of these things in each of the districts in the 2012 budget. The demonstration curb cut consolidation, again, is something that we'd have to reach out to the property owners and see who was willing to participate in that. But the idea there is, from a pedestrian standpoint, one of the challenges that 38th Avenue has, is it has a lot of curb conflicts, so a lot of ability for cars to enter sites, potentially, you know, oftentimes multiple curb cuts on a given lot. Not great for the pedestrian environment, and sometimes they're not needed by the business owner. Obviously, that's a conversation to have with individual property owners. But we're proposing that if you could consolidate some of those, and then ballard them off or add planners, again, enhance the pedestrian environment by consolidating some of the curb cuts. I focused a lot today on the road diet, in part because it's certainly a significant recommendation, but also one that I know the public is very interested in for good reason. But I don't want to gloss over the other important recommendations in this plan. The plan is a holistic planning document, it all works together. The road diet is only one component of the other recommendations, whether it be the big idea of creating a civic center campus, of creating a downtown Wheat Ridge between the Wadsworth Town Center and the Main Street, and making that a real focus of the community, which I think it already is, but to build upon that. The need to develop a marketing and branding strategy to really be able to speak to what 38th Avenue is, within the community as well as external to the Denver region. The rezoning, the corridor to mixed use, as the mayor and council are aware, we think the mixed-use zoning districts are a really powerful tool in terms of being a very flexible, but a very form-based code, so they get you good design, but they're more flexible when it comes to land use. We think that's a good fit for the corridor. Obviously, the administrative approvals that are potentially available after doing those mixed use, from a development standpoint, we think is very attractive. So that's a real important recommendation. One of the most important recommendations, I believe, is the formation of the leadership committee. We realize that for 38th Avenue to be successful, it's not simply because we adopt a plan, or, you know, we present a plan to you, it needs the support of the business community, of the property owners, of the residents along the corridor. So that leadership committee, and the formation of that, and getting that some momentum for the long term, is a real critical recommendation as well. As I mentioned previously, the Planning Commission, as is required, did hold a public hearing on September 15th, and recommended approval to City Council. We believe that adoption of this corridor plan would support implementation of really three important policy documents that have been recently adopted, including envisioned Wheat Ridge, the city's comprehensive plan adopted in 2009, City Council's strategic plan, and our economic development strategic plan, which was adopted in 2010. And those are my comments.
Thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. Please step forward, form a line along the wall if you'd like to speak on item number 2. Please spell your last name for the record. And please, like I said, council has received comments from the Planning Commission and your emails and letters, so please, if you agree with somebody, feel free to say you agree or disagree with the previous speaker.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Servini, your former mayor. And I'm asking you to approve this plan tonight. I, when I first heard about it, said, why on earth are we studying 38th Avenue again? When Carl and I came to Wheat Ridge in, that's the wrong, 1956, it had flooded all along Pierce and on Taylor Street, we had water all over. Then they, it didn't take much rain to flood it. Then we widened it to four lanes, and that was controversial. However, it did stop the flooding. I don't think there's any flooding on 38th Avenue anymore. And as I was a mayor, what's a mayor, there was a study with citizens on what they wanted 38th Avenue to look like. And they wanted it to look like the 50s, which is why the entrance to Wheat Ridge sign on Sheridan is designed as it was. And those of you who know, our business was very big in the 50s, and it, I don't think that's what the younger people want now. So then, later on, we managed to do the streetscape, but it ended at Harland, and that was at least 10 years ago. And the plan before you isn't changing the street, we're not reengineering the street, it's only continuing the concept of streetscape, so the street doesn't look so bad. Wheat Ridge is a process-oriented community, I know that. However, postponing this design even further is even too much of a process for the people of Wheat Ridge. On 32nd and Lowell, Denver improved the streets, sidewalks, lands, et cetera, long before the businesses were there. So please approve the 38th Avenue corridor plan in front of you tonight. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Mindy Ramig, the last name is spelled R-A-M-I-G. And this is Tracy Volkman, last name spelled V-O-L-K-M-A-N. We're both environmental health specialists, and I'm in a supervisory position with Jefferson County Public Health Department. Our primary responsibility at the Health Department is to review land use cases and provide recommendations on how proposals can be modified to achieve project objectives, but simultaneously preserve or enhance public health. In relation to the 38th Avenue corridor plan, we've reviewed the plan, and between us attended all of the community input sessions. We have also communicated internally with our environmental health director, Dr. James Dale, and the department's executive director, Dr. Mark Johnson, to inform them of the plan's content, which they're very supportive of the elements within that plan. On the basis of our project involvement and communications with our leadership, Jefferson County Public Health fully supports the corridor plan and adoption of Resolution 38-2011. Founded on a solid set of guiding principles and recommendations, and informed by a broad range of community input provided over the last six months, the plan demonstrates a good balance of related interests for the future of this corridor. From a public health perspective, the recommendations and implementation plan provide a solid framework by which to create a more complete corridor over time and achieve some meaningful public health benefits. When taken together, the action steps presented in Chapter 5 of the plan set the stage for a vibrant and prosperous downtown Main Street, where pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users of all ages and abilities would have improved access to and from the corridor, but also within and throughout the area. Creating an environment along this section of 38th, where more students, employees, business customers, and other visitors are inclined to walk, bike, and/or take the bus, could have clear benefits relating to their mental and physical health. As studies from throughout the United States demonstrate, an increase in these alternative and active transportation modes could also have air quality benefits, calm traffic, and reduce the rate of auto-related injuries. Given the potential of this plan to benefit public health while creating an economically vibrant downtown environment for Wheat Ridge, the County Health Department is pleased to offer its full support, and we thank you for your consideration and your time.
My name is Denise Waddell, W-A-D-D-E-L-L, and I am the Board President of Wheat Ridge 2020, and the President of First Bank of Wheat Ridge. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I am here to show my support for the West 38th Avenue corridor plan. As someone who has been involved with economic development activities in Wheat Ridge for the past seven years, both with my work with Wheat Ridge 2020, as well as a local community banker, I am excited to see the next step toward our vision of creating a robust commercial market along 38th Avenue. The seeds have been planted, and we can already see the fruits of our labor. I have been enticed to shop at the newly developed Crest Kitchen in Wheat Ridge Cycloory. I've eaten at Ceviche's, and I'm on the cusp of doing a construction project with Compass Construction, and our newest restaurant to come, Right Coast Pizza. I am pleased about the prospect for these new and long-term businesses, and I am excited about creating an environment that will increase their success. We want to create a place, a place that people drive to and not through, a destination for dining, shopping, and discovering what Wheat Ridge has to offer. Let's bring more people here, not just shuttle them through. Thank you.
My name is Enos Gokey, G-O-K-E-Y, and I'm urging this council not to pass this amendment to the comprehensive plan for quite a few reasons. I believe that the business people of this community are most likely going to end up getting a short stick here. Sorry to say that, that's what this is all about. This is all about increased opportunity for the business community to develop more revenue for the city, so they can have a brand-new city hall located up on Upphum Street. I mean, that's what I see. I see a document here that has a nice new building for a city hall and everything like that. Good, I think that's great. I think we need new infrastructure in this community. I think we need brick-and-mortar projects. Let this play. This is pretty pathetic. So I'm asking this council to really look at this thing seriously. Once you get into the entry workings of it, you find all of the faux pas, that people are insinuating that work, that frankly, haven't been proven to work. You have to prove these things to work. I mean, we're talking about people here that don't make their living on profit-loss margins. We're talking about people who sit here and devise plans so people can think about that. But no, I think the people need to think a little bit more about this one. Thank you so much.
Evening, members of council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Ted Hyde, my last name is spelled H-G-Y-D, and I wanted to thank you all for your time and consideration tonight. I'd like to go on record to say that Live Well Wheat Ridge, for which I'm the planning consultant, fully supports this plan. And it's really exciting, we think, as a community partner, to be at this step in the process. As Mr. Johnstone stated, a lot has already been invested in terms of time and resources to bring us to this pivotal point, so we're very excited about that. And as a community coalition, it was very rewarding for us to be directly engaged in all of the community input sessions. Molly Hansen and I served on the stakeholder committee, as well as the staff committee, so we really feel like since the beginning, we've been directly involved. In terms of the community input, really for the last year-plus, we've been asking people around the community, so what about 38th? What do you think? What's your vision? What are your thoughts? What could work? What couldn't? And I just want to show you quickly that we've gathered some really, I know it's pretty impromptu, but we've gathered some really good input from residents all throughout the community, at the community input sessions, at community-wide events. And a lot of what we heard is very exciting. You know, we want that downtown Main Street, we want an economically vibrant engine for the city, we want it to be pedestrian-friendly, we want it to be bike-friendly, bring a farmer's market. So for us, a lot of important concepts that support public health, healthy eating and active living, that we're excited about. From an economic standpoint, I think it was stated well in the staff remarks, this really is the critical piece to this plan. There is a lot of data, and Mr. Johnstone is right, if you do the research throughout the country, there is a lot of data to show, and it is not universal, that road diets, complete streets, traffic calming, can have a very, very positive economic effect on communities. As the woman from 2020 said, we want to create a place that people want to come to and not drive-through. I think that was very well said. And in terms of traffic, I went to the Planning Commission meeting on the 15th, and three leading things I really heard again and again, and these are all valid concerns expressed by community stakeholders, the level of service, travel time, and diversion. And I was an environmental consultant for 12 years. And I was an environmental consultant for 12 years, and I've reviewed dozens of traffic studies. And the report put together by Mueller Engineering shows that there won't be a significant degradation in the level of service, there won't be a significant diversion that would result in improved travel time, and that the diversion is not going to occur. And so motorists would not be adversely affected traveling along the corridor. So taking that all into effect, we strongly believe the data demonstrates positive effects and not negative effects in this proposal. And in closing, we really urge you to support this plan in its entirety. We think it would be very good for this community. And all its integrated pieces, land use, urban design, the roadway diet, and the recommendations, they really fit together to create a positive vision for this community. We feel the plan is flexible yet comprehensive, and will lead the community forward in the next two decades. I really want to thank you for your consideration and your support.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record and your city or your address.
My name is Derek McKnight, M.C.K., and I G.H.T. I live here in Wheat Ridge, 28th and Eaton. I think it's a pretty good idea to go ahead and do this. Three years ago, I was looking for a place to start a family, and as you can see, I've done that. Sorry. You know, it's a little nerve-wracking, it's the first time I've done this, but I think it's a good thing, you know? It's bringing in young families. To me, I'm looking for a place that I want to stay a long period of time, potentially maybe retire, as somebody else had said. But Wheat Ridge has grown on me severely in the three years that I've been here. I now work here, live here, and hope to continue living here. And I think it'd be pretty awesome.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, members of council and mayor. Chad Har, 7190 West 48th Avenue. Some of the things I was going to say have already been said. I support this plan. I think it's an exciting plan. It's a vibrant plan for our community, something we definitely need. You know, sometimes I feel like the forgotten stakeholder of this area because of the fact that I'm 10 easy-walkable blocks from the corridor. And, you know, we don't get the flyers, we don't get the mail, we always have to look on the website to see what's going on and that sort of thing. And we're easy-walkable blocks, and I want to walk somewhere in Wheat Ridge, too, to get what I need, you know? Someone said to me the other day that suburbs are a place where you live, and you drive to other suburbs to get what you need. And I thought, that's some thinking that is 50 years outdated, 60 years outdated, when people did do that sort of thing. Now families are looking to move to suburbs that have areas where they can walk to, parks where they can go to, shopping and dining where they can congregate with their fellow citizens. And that is something we desperately need in Wheat Ridge because, quite frankly, I drive through Wheat Ridge to go to those type of places. So, and I know a lot of my fellow citizens do as well. And, you know, Wheat Ridge has become a place where the 38th Avenue Corridor is a place that you just drive through. It's easy to drive through. It's a quick way to go from the west end of town to downtown, and there's really no reason to stop. You're going so fast down the corridor that the signage is hard to see, and it's all against the buildings. I would like to see signage where we're actually looking out, projecting into the street where people can read so our business -- because our businesses in the area, people will stop, they'll slow down, they'll frequent those businesses. You know, Wheat Ridge always embraces the small-town atmosphere and feeling, but we don't have a Main Street. And if we're saying 38th Avenue is our Main Street, really, it looks like a small town that's been forgotten. We have lots of vacant buildings, we have lots of rundown buildings on 38th, and this plan, I think, would help change that direction. We'd slow that down, we could reinvest in the city, and I think that's a great thing to do. You know, 38th Avenue reminds me right now, the traffic does, of the show The Biggest Loser. We've already gone on a diet, the 38th Avenue Corridor has, and all we need now is a makeover. I mean, really, there's not enough traffic to support four lanes, and it needs just a makeover. I mean, we've already done some great things. There's some great shining star businesses, several of them have already been mentioned. And, you know, I really think that we really just need to do the stuff that makes a place a wonderful place for our citizens, the streetscaping that's been mentioned, and all the other things and the road diet. You know, and right now, the people are passing through Wheat Ridge to go to those areas. They're going to Golden, they're going to Lakewood, they're going to Old Town Wadsworth, Old Town Arvada. They're not staying here at all. So let's bring that back. So, you know, like it's been said, I urge council to vote yes on this plan. You know, let's not be a pass-through city anymore that's been stated, let's be a go-to city. And I love that comment, so. And I think this is a great economic plan for our citizens, property values, and for our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Wesley. Last name spelled Wesley, W.E.S.L.E.Y. I live at 3507 Ames Street in Wheat Ridge. Mayor and City Council members, I'm here to voice my concern about your attempt to apply road diet to 38th Avenue. My concern was confirmed when I had a recent conversation with Denver Public Works Department. They said that they would never use road diet on 38th Avenue and would like to discuss with you any impact that was perceived that the road diet would have on their end. They can show you many pitfalls to using road diet in an incomplete setting. They said Wheat Ridge will have a big problem trying to undo whatever road diet does. Along with my concerns over the incorrect usage of road diet on 38th, I'm concerned that the city lacks the ability to implement a cohesive plan for 38th. The concern is repeated in the City Paid For Community Revitalization Partnership Document, CRCP, that points out that city officials have an absence of focus and communication. The city has not listened to the community. When they asked for a street with diverse land use and unique identity that would attract shoppers to our city, the lane configuration was not their concern. It was pushed by city-paid consultants. C dot traffic figures show that 38th is currently handling approximately 17,000 daily trips, which is at the top end for any road diet project. The City Paid Consultant, Mueller Engineering Company's technical memorandum stated that the current crash rate is below state average and better than average for urban principal arterials. The actual number of accidents on 38th is 144 accidents over a two-year period. That's 1.5 accidents a week, hardly a road that is experiencing traffic problems. In addition to the road diet -- pardon me. In addition, the road diet traffic analysis shows that all of the road diet plans that the city and their paid consultants have put forward will increase the current travel time by 50% on that section of 38th. Additionally, it pointed out that the road diet will result in 17 of the current bus stops requiring the buses to stop in the only lane of traffic. This will drastically increase the possibility of more crashes and create dangers to pedestrians, the exact opposite of what you're trying to do. The U.S. Department of Transportation classifies the type of road diet the city and their paid consultants are pushing as the most extreme type of road diet. The CRCP recommendations questions the city's ability to operate in a positive economic plan and further suggest that a downtown development authority will need to be set up to handle the development of 38th Avenue. How do they suggest it be funded? Through raising taxes on the citizens of Wheat Ridge. This tax increase is such a real possibility, I found it echoed in the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan itself. The city and the City Council already have the tools they need to beautify 38th Avenue and attract new businesses. The Streetscape Manual sets out the design guidelines for businesses and the city and sets out a priority for pedestrian-friendly usage. The city has an Economic Development Division, who is to support economic development efforts that attract, retain, and create quality jobs. They have grant programs that assist businesses with beautification. And we have an updated sign code. These tools currently exist for you to better the city. Please use them. Albert Einstein defined insanity as doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Another plan is not the answer. The answer is to use the current tools available to the city. Road diet in and of itself is not a bad thing, but forcing it on 38th Avenue without a support mechanism in place is a recipe for another disaster. Remember, you are going to have to ask the citizens for another tax increase to fully utilize this program. I would suggest that you table this for more thoughtful planning or vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Christopher, C.H.R.I.S.T.O.P.H.E.R. My wife and I own a home on 2660 Gray in Wheat Ridge. And I would ask council members and Mr. Mayor that you would adopt this plan, please. I think it's very important for our city. We've enjoyed being residents of Wheat Ridge, reminded on the city's website, routes and short commute. I happen to work in lower downtown Denver at 16th and Market. It is a lovely short commute for me. I make use of bus transportation, make use of my car, and I also bicycle to work some days. And so I'm very aware of the need for transportation that meets all the needs of our citizens. C dot was just referenced. Actually, they're just coming out with a planning and design guide that will include extensive details in their design guide on pedestrian and bicycle facilities, which, whatever decision is finally made, will be a valuable tool for this redevelopment of 38th. We focused on this phrase of road diet and its relative impact on car traffic. I'd also like to lean on our friends from C dot who put forth this state statistic, which is that only 70% of our residents in this state have driver's license. The other 30% do not drive. So as I look at this plan and its emphasis on accommodating pedestrians, slowing traffic down to make it safer, reducing those 1.5 accidents per week that I just learned from the last presenter, is of value to our community. Most importantly is the economic component. It is one long-term concern that my wife and I do have about being citizens in this community, is I see the vibrant economics of other communities. Where I work, I mentioned lower downtown, those of us that remember the 15th Street Viaduct and the 16th Street Viaduct that just moved people out of downtown and gave them no reason to stop. And now, of course, all of us know about the vibrant economic revitalization that's happened over the last 15, 20 years. I also was contacted last month and hosted some journalists who cover industry business news who came in from Southern California, and they wanted to visit lower downtown, they wanted to visit Golden, and they wanted to come to our own Wheat Ridge Cyclory here because of its great success. They noted that a recent article in the largest bicycling publication, which is Bicycling Magazine, highlighted the 100 best bike shops in the United States, and they featured the top 10. And our own Wheat Ridge was amongst those top 10. So a little story to highlight the importance of that particular business and this plan overall, and the creation and the economic positive impact of a 38th Street Corridor as outlined in this plan. We had a choice after leaving lower downtown and going out to Golden where to have lunch before our meeting with the Kefel family at Wheat Ridge Cyclory. And we chose Golden because there was some wonderful outdoor dining on a beautiful day on Washington. And then we still had an extra hour, and we moseyed up the street and stopped at one of the lovely coffee shops, did a lot of people watching. And it really highlighted in the context of this evening and this proposed change to go from five lanes to three, that so many of these vibrant downtown areas are just one lane of travel in each direction. Golden, Arvada, Louisville, I didn't realize those pictures in the plan were from Louisville. That was very helpful. So I think that would be a real advantage for us. Finally, in terms of Denver Public Works, I've actually worked with some of their planning people. And just so you're aware, they're taking away some lanes of motor vehicle traffic, and they're dedicating them to bicycles in the busy downtown area. So there are some other ways to look at it. I see the note. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody, there is not a time limit tonight. This is public comment under agenda item, so there's no time limit, but please try to keep your comments to three minutes if you can. Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Christopher Sanchez, S.A.N.C.H.E.Z., 6630 West 38th Avenue, number two. I guess I'm probably one of the younger generations of people at the meeting, and I would just like to give my input on how I feel that the corridor could be very helpful for the Wheat Ridge community. Again, my name is Christopher Sanchez, and I have been a resident for Wheat Ridge for seven years, and I have lived directly on 38th Avenue for all of those seven years. In the years I have spent living on 38th Avenue, I have become very familiar with the community, the business, and the traffic flow within the area. Within the proposed road diet, I feel that it is very good and a very well-thought-out economic development and benefit to not only the businesses in the community, but to the safety of the people who walk 38th on a daily routine and also a daily basis. Over the years, my fiancee and I have supported many of the businesses in the community. One of our favorite places in Wheat Ridge is the Wheat Ridge Lanes Bowling Alley. With the help of the corridor plan, wonderful establishments like the Bowling Alley will be around for much longer. My fiancee and I also wish to be a more permanent member of the community by being able to open up our own business within new spaces that will be coming available with the construction of the corridor plan. Businesses will flourish with walking traffic, and hopefully, people will venture within the neighborhoods and want to make Wheat Ridge a community that they would love to live in or be part of. The corridor plan is not only a plan for the now, but it is also a pathway for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Dressel-Martin, D.R.E.S.S.E.L hyphen M.A.R.T.I.N. I'm a professional photographer, and I've had the opportunity to go all over the Denver metro area and all over the state photographing areas very similar to the Louisville area. And it's so depressing to me to go to these areas, and I see these wonderful outdoor cafes, and I see people walking the streets, and I see shops full, and then I come home to Wheat Ridge, and I get through Wheat Ridge 40 seconds faster so that I can get home, and there's nothing going on. I'm tired of living in a community that is stuck in the past and doesn't want to make the move forward. I would very much urge you to make the choice to move forward with this comprehensive plan so that we can have a community that looks forward to the future, builds a street that's good for children, pedestrians, businesses, that has a little bit of parking, that has some places to sit, a comfortable, relaxed hometown kind of place that we all wish that we could go to. And honestly, it's the place that we all drive to when we want to go out on a Saturday night, often. So often in Wheat Ridge, my wife and my children and I, we think, "We want to go out on Saturday night." And we rack our brains, and we go, "All right, well, we've been to this restaurant 15 times in Wheat Ridge, and we've been to this restaurant 15 times," and we end up going out of town. I want to be able to say, "Gosh, there's so many things to do in Wheat Ridge. Which thing do we want to choose tonight?" I want to be able to walk out of my house by Lutheran Hospital and walk up and just spend the entire evening shopping, buying gifts for friends, whatever it is we do, the same things we do on 32nd Avenue, I want to be able to do in Wheat Ridge. And I think this comprehensive plan is a brilliant way and an extremely well-studied plan. A few people have mentioned how this plan is, we don't need another plan, and we need to consider it more. We don't need to consider it more. It's been considered. You're all very intelligent people. You've had the opportunity to read this. It's very clear that this will help this community. And I would love to see it move forward. I know my wife would love to see it move forward. And many of my friends, younger people, and, well, I'm not young, but people younger than me that live in Wheat Ridge, I know would like to see it move forward so that we can have a place that we can call home, a place that we can call up our friends that live in Denver, that live in Lodo, that live near 32nd and Lowell, and say, "Hey, why don't you drive over to Wheat Ridge and have dinner with us at the restaurant we choose instead of always feeling like we need to drive to where they are?" So I hope you pass this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Richard Onslager, it's spelled O.N.E.S.L.A.G.E.R. I own about an acre and a quarter of unimproved land at the southwest corner of 38th Avenue in Tepew, and I'm here tonight in support of this plan. As a small business owner, I'm always a little skeptical of people who are planners and engineers and people who claim to be predicting the future. I don't know what the future holds, and I don't know that this is a perfect plan. I do think it's a modest plan. It requires a relatively small investment, and it's also something that's reversible. I don't, being a property owner and trying to develop property in this corridor for some period of time, I can assure you that we're not going to move forward without something different. That much I can tell you. As you know, we're in a very down economy. Things are very slow, and we're not going to move forward without some innovation, some risk-taking. to move forward without some innovation, some risk-taking, and some public investment. And so I'm asking you to adopt this plan and appreciate you allowing your limited comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Hanscom, H-A-N-S-C-O-M. I'm here to speak in favor of revitalization of 38th Avenue. I've lived here since 1941, a lot of people don't know that, that's a long time. I've seen when 38th Avenue was a dirt road. I've seen all the improvements in those respects. I've also owned Wheat Ridge Lanes since 1964, so I've been here quite a while. I feel like I'm one of the old timers on 38th Avenue and I think I know what's going on. Nothing. Sorry about saying it so blunt, but that's the way it is. We need to do something and do it now. I graduated from Wheat Ridge High School in 1948. So I'm, as you know, I'm the old timer here, I guess. And I've seen an awful lot. I just went to San Diego the first of this month and watched what was going on there. Came back in five days, went through Del Mar, La Jolla. They've got this same corridor we're proposing. I talked to a lot of the people there, they love it. Fire departments have no trouble, police departments have no trouble. I've been there, I talked to the people. I got it firsthand, I didn't take it and there's no rumor, no nothing. Got to go over my notes real careful here, a lot of this has been said and I'm trying to save time.
You can always say you agree with the previous speaker.
By golly, I don't know, I think most of it has been said by a lot of the other people. So I think I'm going to really encourage my time to the next person, but I'm encouraging the 38th Avenue revitalization 100%. Oh, I can tell you another little story. About two months ago, I was not for it. If I'm taking too much time, Mayor, let me know. I asked a lot of the people that were not for doing this, and I never got any good concrete answers. I've gotten so many answers "for" it, I changed my mind immediately, I searched it out by making this trip. And we need to do it. No more studying, no more of anything in the future. It needs to be done now. I can't emphasize it anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Russ Redig, spelled R-E-D-I-G. I'm with A1 Rental on 38th Avenue, 7080 West 38th. I'm here as a skeptic of this plan, I'm against the idea of a road diet, just, basically my business depends on people being able to get up and down 38th Avenue. I'm not a business you can walk to, I'm not a business that you can stroll in and out of, we have to be able to get cars in and out of there, drive in and out, tow equipment in and out of there. Been on 38th Avenue over 50 years. And the thing that I don't like about this plan is if you restrict 38th Avenue down to one lane in each direction, even if it can still handle the traffic, if people perceive that it doesn't, then they will divert to other roadways. And where they're going to divert is 44th Avenue, which is where they're building a nice new Super Walmart. So we're going to divert people out of Wheat Ridge to another city and let them shop there. Kind of polled my customers, who a lot of them come from North Denver, asked them if this plan goes through and it's harder to get to my store, are they going to continue to come down 38th Avenue? And out of over 100 of them, 90% said they would not come down 38th Avenue. Now, as a business owner, when 90% of your customers tell you they're not going to continue to drive down your corridor, that's of great concern. Other people have said, "Well, we can reverse this. If it doesn't work in a year, 18 months, you'll have the right to come back and say, 'This didn't work and we need to change this street back.'" But I'm not going to be here in that 18 months from now if 90% of my customers divert. I walked 38th Avenue, talked to 60 merchants on 38th Avenue, 57 of them are not in support of this plan. And I think that this planning commission, even though they said they've done a lot of talking to the community and with the stakeholders committee, which I was also on, a lot of the businesses on 38th were not aware of this plan and not really involved in this. Nobody had a meeting specifically with 38th Avenue businesses and how it would affect their business and what they would do. I agree that we have to revitalize 38th Avenue, we have too many empty buildings, we have a lot of areas that are underdeveloped, but just because you build this road doesn't mean that there's a developer that's just going to say, "Oh, this is a great road, let's go develop that ground and put that business in there." I think you have to come up with the developments first, get the developments in that district that are suited for the road, and then you can always build the road to the development. But just have a road change and hope that developers are going to come in and develop, it's not the right plan. We can't even get developers to develop the vacant ground at 44th Avenue and up them, where that's empty. They can come in and do whatever they want. And in this current economic develop, or time, nobody has the money to do that. There are no developers out there just waiting for the city to do this road and then we're going to start coming in and redeveloping the 38th Avenue corridor. The other thing that I would like to, that I think is kind of funny, is the business retention plan that they talk about so much in this, in Vision Wheat Ridge. Well, if you have this business retention plan, don't you think you should be talking to the business owners along your corridor where you're planning to change how the people get to those businesses and see if it's going to adversely affect them? Because if you put this into effect and in a year's time you now have a whole bunch more empty buildings because people diverted off of 38th Avenue, what have you accomplished? You know, I'd be all for it if somebody said, "Well, if we put this road in, XYZ Development's going to come in and buy up all these blocks and build all this stuff." And there's nobody out there that has that. You know, 2020 doesn't have that, or economic development people don't have it because it doesn't exist in this current economic climate. The other thing I'd like to address is they keep talking about the center turn lane, reducing two lanes in each direction, one center turn lane. But where we are, between Teller and Pierce, currently has a center turn lane and two lanes. And I haven't come up with a concrete answer as to what they're going to do with all that extra space when they reduce the extra lanes, especially in front of my business where I currently have parallel parking. And they don't have a plan as to what to do with that extra lane and that extra parallel parking. And that kind of will adversely affect me if you just come down and stripe off my business and now I have two lanes of parallel parking, what are we going to do with that? So there's, there's just some things about this plan that I don't think are thought out well enough. Nobody really has the concrete answers that I'm looking for when I talk about this. And if you look at Louisville where they put out their temporary sidewalks to have seating for restaurants, that road is 25 miles per hour. Do you want to be sitting there on 38th Avenue with cars whizzing by at 35, three or four feet away from you? It's, you know, it's not the same setup. And they've constantly said, "We're not going to reduce the speed limit, we're just going to reduce traffic flow." Well, if you reduce traffic flow to slow the cars down, the only way to do that is congestion. So I think that you could take the money that they're asking for to do this restriping, could be put to better use to give the businesses that are currently on 38th Avenue a reason to improve their sights and better serve the community. What I'm looking at is everything that has come to me from the planning commission is detrimental to my business. It's not going to make me want to invest any money in my property at all if I feel like I'm not going to be around and I don't have the city's support to be here. So if the council is talking about revitalizing the corridor, let's give support to the merchants that are already there and then look about redeveloping it some other way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Larry Merkel, M-E-R-K-L, I live in Wheat Ridge. I'm here to oppose the narrowing of West 38th Avenue. Narrowing 38th Avenue is not going to help our business community and it is not the best use of our tax dollars. We should use the $250,000 for better access to 38th Avenue. I live off of 34th Place and Teller. And to walk to 38th Avenue to a coffee shop, to Sunrise Sunset, we have to walk down the middle of the street. We have no sidewalks. Most of the area around there has no sidewalks. The biggest problem we have for access to 38th for most of the residents, you can talk about all you want, how wonderful it is, people will go down, they'll walk down to 38th, we have to walk in the middle of the street. And you look, almost every road that feeds into 38th either has inadequate sidewalks or no sidewalks. Pierce, on the east side, has a small sidewalk that one person can walk on and the school kids, the other half walk in the street. If you're walking down Pierce on the west side, you're walking in mud, water, snow, dirt. Teller's the same way, you have to walk in the middle of the street. And I think if you look, almost every business has parking or access to parking on 38th Avenue. To me, I think it's important we continue the project that was started between Harland and Sheridan. We stopped it at Harland. Continue that project, bring it on down all the way to Wadsworth. That'll help make the area more attractive and more appealing for shopping on 38th Avenue. One of the things that bothered me too, as staff pointed out during planning commission, that streets, the Old Golden Road was four lanes, or was, excuse me, was narrowed by Golden to two lanes. This is only true from Colfax to Ulysses, and this street was never improved, it's been two lanes for years. That is the old industrial rundown commercial area, it's two lanes in Jefferson County. When you get into the area that Golden did the work on, on Old Golden Road, it's four lanes. They've got nice shopping areas, traffic circles, but it's four lanes. Coming back down towards Ford Street to get into downtown Golden, it is two lanes. Two lanes north, one block over, two lanes south, it's still four lanes. They said the same thing was true in Littleton, that Littleton had done a traffic calming and now was two lanes in downtown. That is true from Santa Fe to Littleton Boulevard through downtown. However, it's two lanes east on one side of town, the other side of town, it's two lanes west, back to Santa Fe. Once you cross the railroad tracks, it becomes a four-lane street. The same holds true in other areas as you drive around. It was mentioned tonight, 15th Street, and how nice they've done that area, now you can walk to all the restaurants. When you go over the 15th Street viaduct, it's still four lanes. You have to turn off to get into the two-lane streets to get to the restaurants. What we're doing in Wheat Ridge is we're turning around, we're taking a four-lane street, turning it into a two-lane street, which is not going to help our business community. People are not, I'm sorry to say this, but people are not going to walk from Sheridan to Wadsworth on 38th Avenue. It's not going to happen. 38th, Second Lowell, Washington up in Golden, Gaylord Street, Tennyson Street, and downtown Arvada, they all have one thing in common, they are two lanes. Most of them are not over three to three and a half blocks long. That's what people will walk. You go down on 32nd Avenue and you go to 32nd Lowell, they've got some great restaurants. But if you want to go up to 32nd and Perry, people drive up there and park, they usually don't walk all the way down. And that's what's going to happen here, people are not going to walk from Sheridan to Wadsworth. If we could get to 32nd, or get to 38th Avenue on the side streets on some decent sidewalks, we may walk to the restaurants and what have you. Right now, if you go to Safeway, you gotta, you can't carry your groceries home because there's no sidewalks, there's no good access to even cross. A few years back, one of my neighbors got run over trying to walk home from Safeway. We need to make it safer, we need better access to 38th. Then down the road, you can figure out what you're going to do with it. But I think continue the project from Harland to Wadsworth and give us some sidewalks in the neighborhood. We live at 34th Place and Teller, I guess from what they said at planning commission, we didn't get notified of all the meetings because we aren't in the area of interest. They only went a block and a half off 38th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Carol Salzman, S-A-L-Z-M-A-N-N. 22-year Wheat Ridge citizen, and I'm supportive of this plan from a private citizen perspective, but tonight I'm representing Exempel Lutheran Medical Center. All of you should have had an opportunity to receive a one-page, a letter of support from Lutheran Medical Center, and I'm going to emphasize really the things related to emergency access, because I think that's something that has not been addressed tonight. So from an emergency access perspective, Lutheran was able to look at the traffic analysis done by Mueller Engineering, and we were looking at really four components. One of them was looking at the emergency traffic vehicles coming westbound down the 38th corridor if it was reduced to a road diet. And the study indicated that we'll be fine with that, it's actually positive. It allows for that one lane, center lane, that allows good emergency access and makes it real easy for citizens to easily know to move to the side, so there's less confusion. So that's good. As note, most of the emergency traffic that is received by Exempel Lutheran doesn't even come from West 38th or from 38th, it comes from the two major state highways on Wadsworth Boulevard and Kipling. So not all of the emergency traffic comes, but we're not concerned. The other thing that the road diet does is we are concerned about safety, pedestrian safety is important to us. When you take a corridor and instead of a pedestrian crossing five lanes of traffic, they're now having to navigate three. I think for youth in our community that are in that area, related to the school systems we have, and elderly that are in that community, that we see those both as positive components. We also had a chance to review the traffic data related to accidents, and in studies in communities who have had road diets, there has been data that shows that anywhere from a 17% to a 34% reduction in crashes. So while we know and recognize that crashes do occur in the corridor, it's not the amount of crashes that occur in the state highways and the major corridors. So we're totally supportive of this plan and I urge you to approve this plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rick Gindele, last name is spelled G-I-N-D-E-L-E, and I live at 4579 West 37th Place, that's in Denver. So Mayor and City Council, thank you very much for hearing me tonight. And I am here because my wife and I opened up a business on 38th just a few months ago. And so we opened a yoga studio on the Wheat Ridge Center building, which is right across from Red Tango. So with all the comments and even our own exposure here to Wheat Ridge, since my wife, Michelle, grew up in Wheat Ridge and we drive 38th continually almost every day, one would ask the question, "Why in the world would you open a business in a place where nothing is happening?" And that is the truth, nothing is happening. It's a blighted corridor. And if you really look at everything that's going on throughout the metro area, where Wheat Ridge is located is in between revitalized city communities and new suburban communities farther out on the fringe. Those are what are attracting everybody and investment. And so we're stuck in the middle in between here. So how do you deal with being in a position of geographic comparative disadvantage? What do you do? And if you look in your plan, all the census box that border 38th are in serious need of help in many different ways. And of course, the government needs to step in and create this wonderful infrastructure and this plan that has been, you know, created here and has been designed. And I think it would be a fantastic jumpstart for the community, for business, and for property owners. And I fear that if you do nothing, then 38th will languish like all the other cor- And I fear that if you do nothing, then 38th will languish like all the other corridors around the metro area, whether it be Sheridan, Colfax, Kipling, I mean, you just go on and on, Broadway, et cetera, et cetera. They are all struggling. And what is so encouraging is, we decided to locate because we were aware of this plan, aware of 2020 Wheat Ridge, and that we felt that there's plenty of opportunity where other people don't see it. And obviously, most people don't see it because what they see is really a blighted and distressed area with businesses constantly overturning, going out of business, and all sorts of other negative activities taking place along 38th. So we were aware of this plan before we made the move and we were hoping, obviously, that the City Council would vote in favor of it, because we feel like we're on the ground floor of something really positive happening here in Wheat Ridge. And I can say from a personal experience, being a former city planner and cartographer, that this is a great plan. And yes, there's reservations about the road diet, but beyond that, everything else, no matter what, is 100% positive, especially the mixed-use development. And it'll do a lot of things that people have been very impassioned about and that they have said that they are in support of this plan to do. So thank you very much for your time.
My name is Tim Reed, R-E-E-D. I'm the Director of Facility Planning for Jeffco Schools. Jeffco Schools' position in the matter that's before you is neutral. We don't tend to take positions on these types of things. However, we recognize our presence and the commitment that the school district has made to 38th Avenue. Student safety is foremost in our minds, and whether our students are bussed, are picked up and dropped off, walk or bike. So safety in all of the traffic modes is extremely important to us. You should be aware that we've attended the planning sessions, that we have provided traffic and information to your city traffic department, as well as to the consultants that worked on this plan. We believe that we've been listened to and responded to in terms of our concerns. The traffic that will be most generated, we believe, is Reed Street and High Court, which is primarily where our buses and our parents seem to use to get to the access to 38th. Our preliminary numbers as far as enrollment show a significant increase for the Wheat Ridge Stevens Schools. And currently, we have about nine buses a day, but the trending in terms of how kids get to school is, we're seeing many more parents that actually drop off and pick up. So we're introducing more and more traffic. We've given projections to the traffic department in terms of, if we continue to see growth in enrollment, what our predictions in terms of trips per day would be. What we have done though is worked with when we start school, and we start and end school and during off-peak traffic hours, which we think helps as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please play your last name for the record.
My name is John Stotler, S-T-O-T-L-E-R. I live at 3735 Pierce Street, and I also work at A1 Rental. I've been up here for six years. Prior to that, I did live in Littleton, so I'm familiar with downtown Littleton and what a mess it is with parking and all that stuff. And to try and do this to 38th, I think you're going to create more of a mess than a solution. I think that it will slow traffic down, cause more problems for pedestrians. Because I noticed when I walk on 38th and I try and cross up by Teller where there's an uncontrolled crosswalk, when the school zone lights are flashing, it takes longer to go across, because people, the lights are not timed well. And it will be clear one way, but not another. My concern is that perhaps some students, some other people, may get impatient, take a chance that they shouldn't take, and it may actually increase the risk to the students that are in that area. They sometimes get tired of waiting for that crosswalk light to change over by High Court. And I think this will only exacerbate that problem. In terms of not seeing anybody really, Russ has mentioned that there's nobody really up here to come in and lined up, to spend money, to develop this, that's a huge risk to take at this time. I think that it would be better spent, perhaps coming up with some kind of business improvement district, perhaps coming up with some kind of bond from 2020 from First Bank or whatever, to help people revitalize the buildings that are there. One of the problems that I noticed, there was a, excuse me, there was a health food place that was trying to go in where the shoe store is now. They were going to have cold food only. But I understand they got an occupancy permit, they started to work, and I understand that they were shut down by the fire department because they didn't have enough protection on the ceilings for burn-through in case of a fire. They didn't even have a stove in there. No commercial equipment at all. No commercial kitchen equipment at all. I think what the city would also be better served is to ensure that this doesn't happen by having somewhat of a project manager where all these groups who have control, who have an input, and a necessity for the public safety and proper building codes get together with these people and let them know what they're up against. People have mentioned that you want this to be a place for people to come. That was a place that left that people would have come to, because I have friends that live in Highlands Ranch, they're very much into that type of restaurant, and they were looking forward to opening. They were familiar with the people who were trying to open it, and they would have come up to Wheat Ridge, come up to 38th Avenue, spent money, spent time. And this is what we need to do, I think, is put the money more into helping revitalize the existing buildings, making sure people know what they're getting into, help them meet those codes, those changes that need to be made. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Sally Banghart, B-A-N-G, I don't know how to do this.
Thank you.
B-A-N-G-H-A-R-T. I live at 2909 De Pue Street. I moved into Wheat Ridge in the mid-'70s, and I've watched the city deteriorate. And I think we need to have a strong tax base in order to sustain the city, and deterioration does not invite commerce. I've seen a lot of positive changes in the last few years with the street improvements and the Wheat Ridge 2020 renovations, and I think the comprehensive plan has a fantastic vision for the city of Wheat Ridge. And the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan is essential to that, to the revitalization of Wheat Ridge. You guys have put a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort into developing, into starting, into develop a good foundation for the revitalization of Wheat Ridge. And I would encourage you to continue on that path and approve this 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Roger Lasher and I'm a property owner on 38th Avenue. In fact, I own two pieces of property. And I thought you'd be real happy to see me tonight because I was the last one in line, but I guess we got a couple more. Anyway, I'm in favor of spending money on 38th Avenue, okay? But not on this plan. If a developer came to the city with a plan that says, this may not work, but I'd like to try another one next year, he'd never make it out of the preliminary meeting with city staff. That is what's being presented tonight. It's one of those pass it and we'll design it later, if it passes. Other cities are building roads and sidewalks to get the traffic to the business developments. This plan is designed to keep people out of our community. No action alternative is what we need for 38th Avenue. Leave it the way it is. If we're going to spend money, spend it behind the curb. Spend it on businesses that will be behind the curb and people will come to them. We get the business first, then decide what they need, ask them what they need. That's how you make a business work. These are some rambling notes. 38th Avenue per thousand, or however the CD counts it, is below CD standards, okay? If we have 16,690 cars per day on 38th Avenue, 15% increase is only 2,500 cars. The 16,000 cars aren't supporting what we have now. 2,500 cars more will not support the new business we're looking for. We need more cars. We need more traffic. Every business that comes to a city, local, state, wherever they're going, even out in the country, they want to know what the traffic count is going to be. And if we say we got 16,000 cars, not for them. They won't come to a street that has low traffic count. We've got long-term plans for 2030. Most of us aren't going to be here in 2030. Why are we making plans for that? We're going to be here three or five years. That's what we need to develop. Don't shake your head now, you're supposed to be objective to everything that goes on, okay? I wasn't talking to you. Okay? That's not enough to support the growth that we're going to have on 38th. I was going to stop talking, but the plan that's been presented tonight sounds so great, it solves every problem in the world. Every problem that a city planner will be looking for to take, add to his portfolio. Say, I've got the plan. Just imagine, we've discovered it here in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. If there isn't something in the city you want and can't find it, step up and build it. Buy it. Or encourage someone in that type of business or industry to come to Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Janet Jan, last name is J-A-H-N. I don't probably think I will be here in 2030, but I would like to see the progress that this plan proposes and be part of making it happen, watching it grow. If I am still here, I probably won't be driving, but we'll address that later. I am a new resident to the area. I'm actually here five months now, I think. My concern, oh, I'm sorry, I live at 6340 West 38th Avenue in Highland West, okay? My concerns are expressed because I went to a meeting that they had in our building and decided I better come here and let you know how I felt about what was said or not said. The sidewalks, I see as a problem. My first couple days here, I walked from High Court to my residence building to sign my lease, and then the next morning I walked down to Sheridan, and I had to walk real close to the traffic, I had to walk on dirt, et cetera, et cetera. So the sidewalks are a problem. I hope this would help with that. The walks are too close to the road, they're too narrow. I'm not in a wheelchair yet, but if I was, I'd be challenged on those sidewalks. And as someone else pointed out earlier, there was, the children on bikes or the youth on bikes are a little bit of a problem on the sidewalk. Okay? Where there are non-existing sidewalks, I hope this plan will address that issue also. As a resident of Highland West, there was a comment made about 100 established drivers trying to get out of the driveway to get onto 38th. I think that is a problem. There isn't, the traffic's too fast, and I don't think the speed limit is being honored by a lot of passerbyers. They're using it as a corridor to go somewhere. I won't entertain you with my list of many places I've lived in the past that have done these kind of plans, but if you'd like to speak to me on a more private basis, I can tell you about places in Alaska and Michigan and the Washington, or Seattle, Washington, that have gone through revitalization to save their towns. And that's why I think this corridor is a plus, because I think we need it. I walk down to Dairy Queen, and I walk up to King Super. So I know that you can get there, but it could be made a lot more pleasant trip. And three lanes is a really good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Fisher. That's spelled F-I-S-H-E-R. I live here in Wheat Ridge and I'm also a former member of the Board of Adjustments. I came here to express my support for the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. And I would also like to say that I do intend to be here in 2030. And I just moved, been in Wheat Ridge for a while now, but my wife and I, we just bought a new house, and I hope to never have to move again. So let's keep improving it. One thing that really jumped out at me as I was sitting here today was how many different groups have really been a part of this plan. And that's something that I really appreciate. It was great to hear about the Stakeholder Committee, to hear Live Well, Wheat Ridge, to hear about the Planning Commission being a part of this, to see the traffic study and to see all the work that the council has also done on this. And I really think that we have put in the hard work to come up with a good plan, and we should carry it through. And I hope that you guys will vote for that. The plan, I think also, is very detailed in that it has three different districts. You know, the traffic on the west side is only one small part of this. And I also like that it acknowledges that there is a residential section, and we also have a very well-implemented east side of 38th Avenue near Sheridan that is working quite well. So I think this really gives us some flexibility for improving the west side, and that is going to happen with the businesses. The businesses get input in whether they want traf, you know, more parking, whether they want wider sidewalks. I think there's flexibility there. And I really like the idea of focusing on pedestrian and parking. I think that will really make this a better area. And it really jumps into my mind as we head into another winter, because I remember driving down 38th Avenue after the first snowstorm with our very few sidewalks and seeing people forced to walk in the street almost, because there's just nowhere to go. And we need a strong area there where people can walk between businesses, people can get out, and I really think this is a great idea. I hope you will support.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tara Jan, J-A-H-N, and I live at 3620 High Court. I just actually passed my two-year anniversary for being a Wheat Ridge resident, so I'm very proud of that. I wanted to address three things because for the first time of my attendance at Wheat Ridge City Council meetings, I love that I agree with most of the people in this room. And I love the stickers to show that we, who I agree with. The first thing being, my history with Wheat Ridge started when I read the comprehensive plan, and I think I've told a few of you this before, comprehensive plan, I was actually at the first meeting at the Sons of Italy Lodge with Downtown Colorado Incorporated, and I got to sit with the residents group. And without, I think actually a few of them were here also and already spoke, without a doubt, the consensus of that meeting and leading up through being on the Stakeholders' Committee, which I was also a part of, the conversation was wanting a sense of place and a sense of community. And I think that Ted and Denise at the very beginning mentioned it really well, that creating a community that is vibrant and actually is a place that you want to tell your friends about and invite them to, that's what drew me here, and that's what makes me want to stay here. So the second topic that I just wanted to throw out there, that I actually think that this, the corridor plan is so much bigger than the road diet, and I think that it's kind of disillusioning to have this whole conversation be about the road diet. And I think the biggest part of it is more that it's about energy. It's about some, a movement being created in the city for change, for positive change. And it might not fit everybody's bill, and it might not be perfect, and yes, someone said that this might, this plan might not have every single thing it's supposed to, but it has things that the community was given an opportunity, the business owners were given an opportunity to participate in and share their vision. And I think that it's not perfect, but it's something, and it's forward movement, and it's fueling that fire of energy. And you can see it happening, and you can see it happening with the fact that when it's, since the comprehensive plan started, it drew residents, it drew businesses. You have, just on 38th, you have the shoe store, the flower store, the Sabeche, you have the new pizza store. I mean, and that's just a glimmer of what could happen if the city actually backs it up. And I think the fact that it's only a $250,000 ask at this point, which that's not what this meeting's for, but that seems kind of minimal considering you put three of those businesses, you know, Sabeche renovations and the pizza place, probably just two of those together, and I bet you they're spending more than $250,000 on investments in private property. So you think that one small investment that the city, it sends a message that we're invested, and it also sends a message that you should invest in your own property because there's going to be a bigger payoff. And the third thing I just want to throw out in the spirit of pedestrian-friendly environments is that we are not, I think that as a city, we probably should move with the times and recognize that, yes, traffic is always going to be there, there's always going to be inclement weather where we have to get into our cars, but our society as a whole is moving away from car traffic, is moving towards foot traffic, and I think we need to have a paradigm shift in our head that when we say the traffic on the street is going to decrease, we have to think, foot traffic is also traffic. And if you are out there with your families and friends and going and visiting businesses, just because you're not in your car, you're still contributing to the traffic counts on 38th Avenue. So just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Yang, Y-A-N-G. And I'm not a resident of Wheat Ridge, but I lived in Applewood area, 32nd and Youngfield for 40 years. for 40 years. But I do have investment in Wheat Ridge. I own the building on 6990, what, 38th Avenue? I recently renovated ceviche restaurant. I spent close to half a million dollar there. So, I do have a big stake in the Wheat Ridge. I support this plan. I think with this plan, we should attract some other people coming into this area, maybe opening other restaurants, like the Allmark location and the Valenti restaurant. And I think with ceviche restaurant now open, I hope it attracts some other people. I think with this road diet, I think that will help the block, the area, getting more people coming in to invest money in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kim Calomino, 4070 Dover Street, Wheat Ridge. That's spelled C.A.L.O.M.I.N.O. I can't think of a recent council meeting or even a distant past council meeting where I have heard such excitement from the community, from citizens, from business leaders, business owners, Lutheran, Jeffco Health Department, Liv Well, Wheat Ridge. Everybody is so invested in this exciting concept, and I'm gratified by that community engagement and certainly encourage you to listen to that excitement, embrace that excitement, and speak tonight with a single voice to support this plan. Embrace our future tonight, and let's go. Thank you.
My name is Leah Doze-Man. I live at 3855 Harland Street, Wheat Ridge. I am also a candidate for Wheat Ridge City Clerk. After hearing everybody speak, I'm glad to see such a great turnout and for everyone to be involved in such excitement. I am fairly neutral, but... And I think this could be a step in the right direction to improving our future, but I do want to address some concerns, and I hope you guys have already considered these as well. But the response time of emergency vehicles. As we know Lutheran and one of the fire stations, actually both fire stations are along 38th, but only one is along this corridor that we're speaking of. I'm wondering if the additional congestion might affect these, and if so, how much? I'm also... I've heard that you're going to add sidewalks, and you want to attract pedestrians, more pedestrians and bikers, but I haven't heard any ideas to add bike lanes, and I'm wondering if that may be a part of the plan as well. And I'm also a little concerned with the speed limit continuing to be 35 miles an hour with the narrowing of the roads and attracting so many more bikers and pedestrians. I'm wondering if this... If the 35 mile an hour speed limit might actually detract bikers, because we're narrowing the lanes and the traffic will be so heavy as well as high speed. So, I just wanted you guys to maybe consider this, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello once again. Karen Thaler. T.H.A.L.E.R. I'm here tonight to not only speak as a city council candidate, but also as a citizen. I've heard a lot of citizen input while campaigning, attending the last Planning Commission on the 15th, and through casual conversation. A few things I have thought of haven't... I haven't heard mentioned previously and would like to address tonight. I first would like to state that I truly have mixed emotions regarding the road diet at this point in time. I believe it is being done backwards. A few items I feel need to be addressed before any road diet is implemented are the following, and I have visual aids to help with this. I would like city council to look at these while I'm reading. That would be great. The pictures taken over the weekend will help explain my point of view as well. These are pictures of various existing structures that I feel are truly a detriment to Wheat Ridge and keep our city from moving forward. For citizens in the audience, I will explain the pictures I just handed to city council. This is not a personal... First, let me clarify, this is not a personal issue with any persons or business. It is simply an observation from having lived here so long. The pictures regard weed issues, empty street-side flower planters, inappropriate window coverings, duct tape on a street-facing window, dead geranium plants in another street-facing window, doors and exterior... Other exterior features in need of paint and varnish, just to name a few. A little money goes a long way in creating a vision. It's the time and effort that I feel are lacking. The buildings that have new facades or have been completely refurbished look great, but the seemingly small overlooked details will always detract from the big picture. I believe the overall neglect will hinder our city from completely moving forward. For decades, it has looked this way, and I for one am sick of it. Simply put, some business owners need to clean up their act and be part of the solution instead of contributing to the problem. Still confused, let me paint a picture for you. Say I want to buy Valeni's or Mark's property. I'm interested. I want to open up another restaurant. Patio, everything, that's a great concept. For example, one of the pictures there, Valeni's property, looking next door to the old, I believe, Barta dentist office, the dead geraniums in the window, those have been there for as long as I can remember. Not really enticing me to want to move or build a business here in Wheat Ridge. Those kind of little things need to be addressed. I don't really know, people drive by fast, they don't notice them, but it's been an issue for me and my husband for years, and I finally get to address this now. Some citizen concerns that I said I would address tonight are as follows. Snow removal, parallel parking, increased traffic flow through residential areas, the inefficient transition from five lanes down to three, maintenance of the proposed in-ground flower beds, fire and medical impaired access, just to name a few. I propose the continuation of the previous Sheridan to Harland Street improvements and extending them to Wadsworth Boulevard. As far as the math... Fast-moving traffic, I would like to know why the speed limit can't be 30 miles an hour and post signs stating "speed strictly enforced." It would offer aesthetic continuity, slow down the flow of traffic, and eliminate the majority of valid citizen and business owner's concerns regarding the implementation of the road diet. I am also not appreciative of the fact that council is trying to push this through before new members of council are elected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor, council. I'm Britta Fisher. F.I.S.H.E.R. Resident of District One still, and also still the ex-director of Wheat Ridge 2020. I wanted to just take this chance to say, yes, Wheat Ridge 2020 does support enthusiastically the 38th Avenue plan. You received a resolution from our board stating that support. The other thing I wanted to point out was the more general support that you may have seen tonight. By my calculations, the testifying that we've seen has two neutral, six no, and 21 yes. 22? Okay. Because I count too. Oh, okay.[1091.21][1091.21](Laughter) I also wanted to point out, there are many people in the audience that are wearing stickers of support, business owners, residents, property owners. We have over 50 people here wearing those stickers. Not all of them were going to speak, as this testimony has already gone on some time, but they're supportive as well and wanted to be represented tonight. One of the things that I had heard brought up at a meeting with some of those who were opposed to the plan was, what are other ideas that could be done on 38th? And the first one brought up was one that was brought up earlier this evening, which is continuing the streetscaping that was done from Sheridan to Harland on West through Wadsworth. And it was interesting, because at that meeting, the few other business owners immediately said, "Please, no." And the reason why is, in order to do that streetscaping, land had to be taken from private property. That's why what's really great about this plan is we can look at adding those amenities by narrowing the street. And so, that way, you're not impacting that private property. The other thing I wanted to point out is Wheat Ridge 2020 is a lender and has been making grants with the Wheat Ridge Business District to businesses in the area. And I just wanted to point out some of the recent successes. We saw the renovations of Crest Kitchen and Bath, the Dairy Queen next door, the Dragonfly Cafe. All of these places wanting to improve their real estate. And most recently, we've seen dramatic improvements with Compass Construction, Ceviche Peruvian Restaurant, and Right Coast Pizza Company. These businesses have come to be a part of our revitalization vision. They want to be a part of putting it into action, and at this point, we're asking you, city council, to please say yes, and let's all work on this in putting it into action together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Mike Gauthier. I am the owner of Wheat Ridge Liquor at 5808 West 38th Avenue, and I'll act like I don't recognize anybody in the room if you want me to.[1221.08][1221.08](Laughter) I'll be real brief. I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. And I think each of you, when it comes down to casting your vote, you really have to ask yourself, is this a subjective vote of my own mind, or is this something that I'm following what I've heard tonight, the desire of most of the people that showed up here? Now, it's not an election, but it seems to me the people that are in favor of it are interested enough to show up here tonight and make their comments. There has been a few dissenters, some of which I was confused which issue they were talking about, because it's not the issue at... At subject tonight. But I am a business owner, and I think it's a great idea, and my business is on 38th, and I think you should do it. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll be back around 9:30, okay?
We'll be back around 9:30, okay?
(Audio cut.)
Please have a seat. We're going to go ahead and wrap up item number two here with -- thank you. So we will reconvene our meeting for item number two. It's my understanding that the city clerk was going to read some pros and cons letters into the record as requested by the city clerk. So Bruce, would you please read those into the record, the name of the company or person, and then pro or con?
Yes, thank you. The first I have is from Scott Shields, the CEO of Family Tree, and he speaks in favor of the plan. The next is from Ron Kiefer, President of Wheat Ridge Recylery, in favor of the plan. We have one from Ed Deeds, Real Estate Revolution, and he is in favor of the plan. Next is John Litivitis from Axios Commercial Real Estate, in favor. We have one from Mike Gauthier, who I believe was actually here tonight. He was in favor, as you're aware.
I would ask you, please silence or turn off your cellphones, please.
Next is from Mark Eskow and Justin Vogel. They're the Right Coast Pizza Company, the new one on 7,000 West 38th Avenue, in favor.
A second, Bruce.[962.43][962.43](Laughter.)
Apparently someone got a new phone.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Let me do that last one again. Repeating, Mark Eskow, Justin Vogel, Right Coast Pizza, in favor. Catherine Correll, Executive Director, Wheat Ridge -- oh, I'm sorry. Downtown Colorado, Inc., in favor. Kate Willink, who is a citizen, and she is in favor. And Steven Rogers, Heritage Vision Clinic, in favor. And last is Jim Jensen, Ralph Pendle, from Quality Auto Care and Tire Center, and they oppose.
Thank you. Before we move on to council discussion, is there anyone else who wanted to speak on their public comment before we move on to council discussion and questions? Saying now, we're going to go ahead and move on to council discussion and questions. Do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Tsang? Mr. Reinhardt?
I think we should call the question.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 38-2011, a resolution adopting the 38th Avenue Quarter Plan, and by such adoption, amending the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval. It was taken by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion is read from the packet. Ms. Berry?
I'm going to be supporting this motion. Some of the comments against referenced, there's no need to do this now because there's no need, and we can't look 20 years down the road, and we should only look three years down the road or five years down the road. And if we do that, we're going to fail as a city, and we're not going to survive, and we're not going to sustain. You look at any successful revitalization, and it occurs over a long period of time. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of thought. And that's what this document does. This document sets a foundation and a beginning point for that revitalization, and I will be supporting that. I read all the letters that were submitted, and the thing that really struck me the most is that the businesses that have recently located to the city have done so because of the community effort and because of this plan. We've had new businesses come just to participate in the plan, and they did so because of the community spirit and the community camaraderie based upon that plan. So in some regards, this plan has already been successful because it's brought new businesses. And we need to continue with this plan, and it's going to take a long time, and it's going to take a lot of effort and continued effort and follow-through. It isn't something that we're going to do in two years, or three years, or five years, but it's going to be a sustained effort that we keep on, and we need to start, and we need to get moving now.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Adams?
Thank you. In -- I also, I don't have specific questions about the plan because we have chewed on this plan and read this plan and presented this plan, and I want to commend Sarah, Sally, Ken, our staff, for the incredible amount of work that they've put into this. I want to commend Livwell Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge 2020, all these organizations coming together. To see something happen like this collaboratively in our community is absolutely a bonus, and I am so thrilled to be a part of it. I read the letters. I read the letters. I think our council needs to know, and our community, that there were quite a few people at the Planning Commission that had some letters of objection, and those are in our packet, and we read those equal to the letters that are here. I also had more letters that were emailed to me, a couple in opposition to this particular plan. I know that I always look carefully at the Planning Commission notes. Sometimes I watch and listen to it also on video, and I hope that other people do because they are a valuable resource, our Planning Commission. Our Planning Commissioners did move forward to this with this plan. There were two planning people that were in fact wanting to postpone the plan. Other than that, the questions that the Planning Commission asked and the answers that were given, I understand Mr. Johnstone went out to the business community again just recently since the Planning Commission and talked to some of the businesses along 38th Avenue. I think our efforts have been well-spent, and I will be supporting this plan, and I need the community to know that we are working as a group, and 38th Avenue is one section of our city that I am very vested in as a representative in the Applewood area. As I walked the district, I had this plan with me, and our Applewood community at the west side of town is very, very excited for the most part. The people that I did take time and talk to, just a handful of the 38th Avenue, because I wanted to get a feel for what Applewood was feeling over on my side of town. I represent the whole district, but I wanted their feel, and they were excited, truly excited about this. I couldn't find anyone that was not. So they've asked me for eight years to have something happen in this city, and I think we're starting with this plan. Thank you to our staff, and thank you to the community. That's all.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Tsang? Mr. Stages?
I truly hate to be a Debbie Downer, but I've watched this, and when I took it in office, I am to represent the people and the businesses. And if a business has a problem, I have a problem. And until we address that, the problem that we have, the true stakeholders on 38th are the people on 38th that own property or business. We never once had a meeting with them. Now, I'm going to say, you're going to say that we had three meetings. The first meeting was, here is what some of the stuff that we're thinking about. The second meeting was here are what we're thinking about, and the third meeting, the public as this is what we're going to do. But at no time was there a meeting with the property or business owners on 38th. Now, we have always had great success with this city on whatever we do to get buy-in with people or groups or whatever. We have gone to those people that it affects the most and tried to explain it to them, get their buy-in from it, and things worked much better. But the flaw on this program was nobody ever addressed the business community on 38th. Now, I have a lot of them come to me and say, "Mike, we have a problem." Well, if they got a problem, I got a problem, because I was elected not only to represent the citizens, but the businesses are still part of the citizenry of Wheat Ridge. The problem that they have, and there's some very unanswered questions with this plan, don't get me wrong, you know, there's passion on both sides of this plan, and for every letter that we get in support, we get emails or whatever of not support. I've had a tremendous people stop by my work and say, "Mike, are you crazy that live in the area?" It's a new concept, a very new concept. We got to somehow get the buy-in of these people to do it. And one of their big questions is, is in all this, nobody knows who's going to get a curb cut and who isn't. That's a big question that we have to get answered, and it's a big question that upsets the business community because they don't know. They do not know if they're going to get a curb cut, if they're going to lose parking, which they will. Out in front of my business, the way that thing is, I could lose the whole front of property. Now, I don't have to give it to the city, but what am I going to do if they don't give me a curb cut there to park cars with? I guess I could have picnic. You can come down and have a picnic at the tire company. Why, we change oil or whatever? I don't know. I've never had, talk about passion, been called, the names that I've been called, a few, I'm not visionary, I'm one of the good old boys, whatever that is. I've been called a part of the body.[1528.35][1528.35](Laughter.) I'll leave that up to you as to what that was. So there is passion on it, and I have to take that into consideration. Now, nobody, what I have is respect for the businesses on 38th. My family's had that business there 58 years, and some of them, it's going to be a little bit tougher maybe to bring them around or to do stuff, but I think we were very remiss when we did not have a meeting with the property owners and business owners on Wheat Ridge. I think that's one way. We have got to get the buy-in if they're going to do it. We've got to, you know, explain to them what's going on. It really kind of bothered me because in an email or whatever this was that came out from 2020 Friday, they listed a bunch of stuff why this should be, and it says, "Even with all this evidence, some people are afraid of change. They hope that somehow the status quo will improve instead of continuing to decline." I take personal exception to that. I truly do, because there's not a business on 38th that is not for revitalization. You know, a lot of them have been there for years. They don't know how. And by changing this road diet, is that truly the success for revitalization on 38th Avenue? I don't know. I truly don't know. But we've got to give an opportunity to the businesses to give their input, other than say, "Well, you were invited to this meeting or that meeting," but you got to figure the first two meetings that were public were just, "Here's some ideas. What do you think?" So I truly would, in the process, before it goes on or whatever, have a meeting with who it affects the most, and that's the stakeholders that either own or have a business on 38th.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Tsang?
I really like this plan. I think it is a wonderful idea to build on. However, my problem is with, I really would like to have two issues on the plan separated. I'd like to have the road diet taken out and just approve the plan without the road diet. I understand that there's not the votes there to do that, so I will have to not, I won't be able to vote for this plan. I don't think that the road diet needs to be done at this time. This is a long-term plan, and frankly, my, where I'm coming from is purely fiscal. Frankly, I think the road diet is going, they have in here that it will cost $280,000, and they list it as an experiment. I consciously, as steward of the taxpayers' money, cannot spend $280,000 on an experiment. I also feel that it's not going to be just $280 for the city because Wheat Ridge 2020 is asking $100,000 from the city, which will bring it to $380,000 for them to do their marketing and all. So it isn't just $280,000. If we give $100,000 to Wheat Ridge 2020 for this way, it comes to, out of our costs, $380,000. So with the road diet in there and being the fiscally conservative, which I promised my constituents I would be when they elected me eight years ago to City Council, I cannot consciously support. We have so many other things, the economy is so bad that we are, our revenue is not coming in. We have our city manager telling us that in -- We have our city manager telling us that in possibly three to five years, we will be out of money unless we do something such as raising taxes, which none of us would vote to do. But taking all that in consideration, I cannot spend almost a half a million dollars on an experiment.
Do you have any other comments or questions before we pull the council? Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that it is troubling to me that the constituency that would be, that, there's a lot of support and a lot of passion, as my colleague Mike said, and it is troubling to me that a big portion of the most affected constituency does seem to oppose it. But, so I tried to, for myself, take a look at what the core issue was, and for me, it really boiled down to whether I believe the transportation studies and the case studies, which seem to demonstrate that this is work and that this idea works and has merit, and that the impact on traffic is, that would allow us to have better areas doesn't come at the expense of the overall vehicle count, which feeds the, which feeds all of our businesses. And so upon reflection, I basically believe the reports, the traffic study in particular, but I also spent some time, and obviously less than my colleague, who spends all day on 38th Avenue, a couple of mornings standing and watching the traffic at peak hours, and I drove 38th Avenue on my commute some extra times in the mornings. I never did in the evenings because it didn't work. But, and I believe that the opportunity to improve, to improve the accord, that this plan represents an opportunity to improve the corridor without substantially driving down the total traffic, which feeds our businesses. And on that basis, I am intending to support this plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
First of all, this is 168 pages, this report. This is very, very detailed. It is very involved. It's not exactly fascinating reading, but it is really, makes you understand that there, these studies have been very thoroughly done. I particularly appreciated all of the commentary, and I'm very aware and realize this is a heavy decision, because there are businesses out there who are fearing of losing business. Some good points about development, lack of business development because of this situation of our small, that our traffic count would go down. Not go down, but when you talk about a small traffic count, developers do not want to come here. But we are also adding a pedestrian count, which I think someone else pointed out, which I think was valuable. And so much of this is, we have to realize that we're grabbing onto the, this is kind of a, hanging on to the status quo, where we're grabbing on to what could go wrong versus amplifying the things that could go right, which sound, I, some of the letters we received, I'm very impressed with, and I wanted to, if I can find it, read one quote. Wheat Ridge is moving beyond analysis and conversations about the creation of a downtown that adoption would send a very clear message to developers, retailers, prospective residents, and other stakeholders. Wheat Ridge is moving ahead on creating an economically vibrant, pedestrian-friendly, dynamic downtown Main Street. This is a unique and exciting opportunity. As others did when I ran for election two years ago, one of my promises, my campaign promises, was that I would be supportive of changes on 38th Avenue, to make it the kind of vision that so many of have expressed tonight. So I will be supporting it.
Any other comments before we pull the council? Ms. Langrue?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also be supporting this. I have a young daughter, and right now, for me to be able to do things in the city, it's challenging. There's not a lot of places that have kind of a gathering place for me to take her, and me and my husband and her, to spend family time together. And sometimes it ends up, we go to Arvada or Lakewood where they have a little bit more of that, and I would like to spend my time in Wheat Ridge. I would like to have a place, when people talk about Wheat Ridge, that says, because they ask me, where's your downtown? And it's pretty ambiguous. We say 38th Avenue, but what does that mean? And does it really demonstrate what downtown is? And I don't think 38th Avenue currently demonstrates what a downtown is, and I really think we need to have that. We've been around a very long time. As one gentleman stated, he's been here since, for 70 years, and when 38th Avenue was a dirt road, that's when the downtown should have been made. That's when we should have been starting that inflammation, you know, giving ourselves a sense of community, and I think that we're finally doing that. I think it's about time we have a place to tell people that is a downtown. And I get that it's going to take some time to get this going, but nothing you start now will grow overnight. And I think we need the time to get this going and really make this a place that my daughter and her friends are going to remember as well.
Mr. Demott?
Well, I'll make this brief. I think if everybody's been counting on their fingers, we see where this has gone. But I am going to tell you that I will be opposing it. You know, I opposed this a year ago, and back then, we were spending 60-some thousand dollars on a consultant, and we'd already seen the pictures, we'd already seen what was going to happen, and everybody's going to, I knew that you could make this book over and over again, and everybody's still going to say, you're diverting traffic. And I know that a lot of people have said, we want to make it more walkable, and we're getting away from automotive traffic, and we're looking for more walkability, but the plan shows that we have 15% increase in automobile traffic in years to come. You know, I know tonight, we're voting on spending $230,000 to restripe a street, and I think it's funny, because I was talking to some people in Arvada today, and right now, they're having the exact same meeting about Ralston Road, and they have the exact same plan, but their plan is widening Ralston Road by 30-some feet. And I thought, well, this is just really strange. One of us is gam, we're both gambling, one of us is going to win, one of us is going to lose, or it's not going to matter. So I'm looking forward to going home and seeing what happens in Arvada tonight. I'm very curious. You know, I do say, you know, when you read a book like this, you can get through all the pictures, and everything looks great. I agree, it needs to look better. Everything needs to look better. I, you know, I went to Disneyland in June with my kids. You talk about a place looking good. I mean, I didn't, Downtown Disney is like, it's the most incredible place I've ever been. I didn't see any tire shops, I didn't see any car repair places. I saw multimillion-dollar restaurants that were packed, and, you know, a mile and a half-long drive of, you know, I mean, probably more money than I would ever even imagine being spent on these places. It was an amazing place, but you're talking years and years and years, and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to get to a place that kind of looked like what was in these pictures. So when you say, you know, we're voting on 230,000, it doesn't seem like that much, but you add in the cost that we spent on the consultants, and then you go to page 64, and it says, actually, the road diet is estimated to cost 3.3 to 4.5 million dollars. The new sidewalks and amenity zones are estimated to cost between 1.3 and 1.7 million dollars. Well, that's a little bit more than what we're asking for. So, you know, I mean, there's examples in here, I could go on and on about what's in the book, but I can't support it because I just feel like we're just, this is just a pebble that's starting a huge snowball, that's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. And when it comes time to pay that bill, unfortunately, we're going to look to where we always look, to those business owners that are down there, and I think it's going to be real hard to explain to them, where is this money going to come from? You know, I, I've probably heard a few times, you know, in hot rodding and racing, there's a saying, how fast can you afford to go? I think this is, how pretty can you afford to make it? You know, it's just, it's just a matter of, by the time you're done with this plan, you're going to look back and say, what was I thinking? Why did I spend so much money? So, that's all I have.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. I have number two. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'm really serious about representing the businesses, trying to get their buy-ins, so I would be remiss if I do not offer this amendment. I move to indefinitely postpone Resolution 38-2011 and until after city staff holds an open house with the businesses and property owners along 38th Avenue between Sheridan and Rosworth to review the recommended changes to 38th Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to postpone until staff holds a business meeting with the 38th Avenue property owners and business owners, discussion on the, actually, it's a substitute motion. It's a motion to postpone indefinitely. So do we have any comments on the substitute motion? Ms. Berry?
I won't be supporting this, and, you know, this, this happens again and again and again, since the eight years I've been here. And we, the full council or most of the council, they basically vote to do a study. We have meeting after meeting, study session after study session on this study. For the most part, we get heads nodding yes the entire time, no one coming up and saying suggestions, oh, by the way, we need to have an open house with the business district. And we get to the final approval, and then we have folks that are against it. And if you're going to participate in it, and if you identify something that you think is a big issue, you should bring it up in the process. You shouldn't wait till the last minute here. And I don't recall once in any study session where someone said we should have an open house with the businesses or the business district. Most of the letters we've got from the businesses are split in here. I mean, I've gotten more letters in support of this, but it just, this has been a long process. This has been a several-year process, and it just happens with the comp plan, it happened with the Wadsworth Corridor Plan, where we get folks at the last minute bringing up an issue and saying, we should stop, we should postpone, and, you know, enough is enough. Let's just move on.
We have a motion to indefinitely postpone. Please pull the council.
And the motion fails five to three with Mr. Demott, Stites, and Mrs. Tsang voting yes.
Okay, we have a main motion, as read in the packet, item number two. Please pull the council on the main motion.
And that motion carries five to three with Mr. Demott, Stite, and Mrs. Tsang voting no.
Thank you for coming tonight. Please, please exit quietly, because we've got quite a bit more to cover tonight, so thank you for coming.
We're going to have to raise, because you can only go to 11, so we'll have to take a vote, see if we can go past 11.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number three, which is Council Bill 30-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Berry?
Council Bill 30-2011, an ordinance approving the transfer of ownership of, is it, so Joy, is it yea or yea ye? Yea, Old Firehouse located at 3232 Depew Street to the Senior Resource Center at 3227 Chase Street. The Senior Resource Center and said, the city met in June to discuss the possibility of transferring ownership of the Yea Old Firehouse from the city to the Senior Resource Center. The center is requesting that the Yea Old Firehouse ownership be transferred free of I'll go on, let's see. I think that's all read.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 30-2011 will be ordinance number 1501.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from staff before we allow the applicant? I guess that they're an applicant. The Senior Resource Center has a few words to say, but Mr. Dollar?
On the staff on this, I don't have anything to add to the request for council actions in the packet. I think it's a pretty self-explanatory.
Thanks. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward and display your last name for the record and state your address or your city.
Good evening again. Kathleen Stapleton, S.T.A.P.L.E.T.O.N., and I'm from the city of Lakewood, but that's okay. We're good, good friends. So anyway, I'm Chair of the Board of the Senior Resource Center, and I'm certainly glad to be here. Brings back a lot of memories as former city councilperson, so, yes, y'all did well. Anyway, we would appreciate if you would please pass this bill. As you probably know, that Jefferson County leads the way in more senior citizens than any other area in the Denver metro area. So, and we would be using this facility for our training, and we also would use it for our training for our volunteers. We have many, many volunteers that we must train for the daycare. And as you probably know, we often have used this facility through, I don't know what the agreements are, but we have used it a lot, and also that we would use it, we would keep it as a public building. So, if there's any other questions?
About the demolition of the building?
Oh, we will not destroy it. No, we're going to use it for training.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful building, I think. Anyway, Yea Old, I call it the Yea Old. Okay, Karen. Okay, thank you. If you have any other questions, please let me know.
Does council have any questions or comments for Mr. Stapleton, Mr. Demott?
Would that be available for rentals to the community as it is now currently?
Yes, oh, sure.
But they would just go through the Senior Resource Center instead of through the city?
Yes. And I understand that we use it more than you do. That's what I've been told, anyway. So, anyway.
You're the major renter right now.
That's what I understand. Okay. And I hope you pass this like you did the last bill.
Any other comments or questions for council? Staff questions? Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I actually was concerned about that last point. Several of my constituents were concerned about the putting in place a measure where protecting the ability of that facility to be used for public purposes. So I'm going to, once we, once the motion is on the floor, move to amend it to make that part of the deed of conveyance that we, that the right of the public to continue to use the facilities goes on into perpetuity.
And you've gotten that motion from?
I have the motion from?
City Attorney.
Okay. You want me to read it now? Well, I thought, no, I'd be glad to. No, well, I can, you know what? He did better than average, actually. Although he tricked me, he left a blank in the middle, and I almost missed it, so I had to write some of my own words.
I'll help him.
Okay, so we've signed an ordinance number, was introduced, had some presentation from the Senior Resource Center. Anybody else here from the public would like to speak on this item before we close the public hearing? And move on to council questions or discussion continued. Any questions? Ms. Adams?
I don't understand. Does that mean that we would have use of it and we would lease it from them, but we would transfer the ownership to them?
That was the thought. Let me, I'll read the proposed motions. We want to discuss that in particular. I move to amend Section 1 of the ordinance by adding the following as a new third sentence. "The instrument of conveyance of the property shall contain a reservation of the right of use by the public on terms substantially the same as they currently enjoy in a form suitable to the city attorney."
That's fine. Okay.
So it's just not for city, city use, it's for public use?
Public use, yeah.
Do we have anybody here? I mean, it looks like we had four people signed up, but I think they were signed up actually for number two, so Kathleen Stapleton was the only legitimate person. So you've already spoke, so you're good.
It's public hearing, you might want to just ask generally, so we've got it on the record.
record.
I said, do we have anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this? And nobody stood up and ran to the podium, except for you.
He's a good runner, too. We all know that.
That's right.
Did we put a clock on that?
That's it.
We've established he can write.
You brought me, you brought me a faulty list, Mr. Doll. This is, this is not good paper. I'm gonna close the public hearing and motions in order.
Is this now included in that?
No, we have to make the amendment.
Well, does the amendment then include that, um, in regarding the destruction item, that, and my concern about this is that people move on, change jobs, et cetera, whatever, that, of course, that it's available at, to the community as it's, as it is presently done at these reasonable rates and, and at, the committee actually uses this quite a bit, actually more hours than the, than the senior center, not center. But as far as the destruction of it, I want to make sure that it's not destroyed.
Uh, well, I haven't drafted the deed and the amendment would go into the deed, pardon me, but the deed could certainly provide that it's, to the extent it's no longer used for, for those purposes, that it reverts to the city or that, you know, that use has to be, has to be maintained by SRC or a successor organization.
Okay.
Because that could happen. Forty years from now, it might not be SRC. They might, uh, organizations change over time and that's perfectly fine. And I don't think you want the property to revert just because they joined a larger organization or something. But to the extent it isn't going to be used for those public purposes, then I think probably I'd, I hate to put reverters in deeds because they can bite us sometimes, but, um, here I think I would, because you wouldn't want it to be sold just for, for then private use and the funds just, uh, otherwise, you know, devoted to SRC's purposes. You want physically the structure to remain.
Right.
Okay.
So let's, let's start off, yeah, well, let's go ahead and we'll, I'll close the public hearing, we'll get a motion on the floor and then we could do some amendments. So go ahead and, Ms. Berry, please make a main motion.
Move to approve Council Bill 30-2011, approving the transfer of ownership of ye old firehouse located at 3232 Depew Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, to the Senior's Resource Center Incorporated, 3227 Chase Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second on the main motion?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Langworthy. Now we need an amendment from Mr.?
I move to amend Section 1 of the ordinance by adding the following as a new third sentence. "The instrument of conveyance of the property shall contain a reservation of the right of use by the public on terms substantially the same as they currently enjoy in a form approved by the city attorney." And in addition, that a reverter clause will take effect in the event that the property stops being used for its current purpose.
That's good. That's fine.
So we have an amendment that talks about public use and the reverter clause that it will be drafted by the city attorney. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Second, like Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the two amendments as one main man. Go ahead and poll the council on the main, the amendment.
Vote again.
Well, please vote again.
That motion carries eight zero.
Okay. Mr. Doll, do you have any questions on the amendments?
No, I understand them and the ordinance, if you adopt it, directs me to prepare the instruments. I need to approve them, so I'll be able to take these concepts that you've discussed and put them into the language of the deed, I think, pretty well.
Thank you. We have a main motion for item number three as amended. Discussion on the main motion before we vote. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, Ms. Stapleton. Thank you for waiting for seven hours, or, or three hours. I'm thinking it was seven o'clock there. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item number four, which is Council Bill 28-2011. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Councilmember Berry?
Council Bill 28-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 18, renumbering Article 2 as Article 1 in acting a new Article 2 concerning public funding for public art. Amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Laws to provide for all of the city's public art regulations in one location and providing for public and private funding of public art.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Council Bill 28-2011 will be ordinance number 1502.
Staff report, anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Doll or Mr. Doll?
Nothing beyond the, what's in them.
Do we have anybody here to speak from the public on item number four? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion or questions on item number four. Ms. Berry?
When this was originally put as part of the Wadsworth Corridor Plan, the intent was if the, if the city was going to do a large capital project, that part of the appropriation for that capital project would include public art, funding for public art, so that we're building a road, we're building a public, um, a, a public gathering space, that there would be public art included in that. The way that the ordinance reads now, it all goes to some funds separate of those projects. And it, it could be put anywhere and not associated with that project. And so, um, I, I, in some instances, it may not make sense to put public art in a public project, but to the extent feasible, I really think it should be within the urban renewal areas, because that was the original intent, is that we're, with any, anything that we're going to do and we're gonna invest public funds, um, and especially in the urban renewal areas, that we'd want to include part of art, a part of that. We don't want it to go to a separate fund, that all of a sudden you have art showing up in city hall or in a park or any, a public works building, that it should be out within that project.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Ms. Adams?
Just for the information for our cultural commission, there is, I don't know, it was not read into it, but the funds in the public art fund can be used for any public art in any parts of the city as recommended by the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission as directed by the city council. So we are making sure that our cultural commission is in fact involved in this process because we do value that. I just wanted that to be on there. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm gonna close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
Okay. I'm going to read the motion with an amendment. I move to approve Council Bill 28-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 18, renumbering Article 2 as Article 1, and enacting a new article concerning funding for public art on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication with the following amendment. Strike Section 1822B and insert, unless otherwise directed by council, all public projects as defined in Section 1822A shall include an appropriation of funds for public art within the project area at the rate of 1% of the project cost. And what that does is, unless council directs, when we have a, a project that fits that public project funding, a construction project, a public construction project over $50,000, that the budget for that project would include 1% for public art unless city council directed otherwise. So that would mean that there would be public art associated with each project.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that doesn't affect the private contributions at all?
We have got a question.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Aren't you not concerned that the, the bites will be too small to have, you know, that one more substantial piece over a couple of projects might not be a better choice for us than the smaller ones?
Well, and that's where it would be unless directed by city council. So if it was a very small project, when you're looking at the, the budget for that, you could say, no, it doesn't make sense to include public art for that project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doll, do you understand that, that flow for staff, from the staff perspective?
Yes.
That makes, that makes sense.
I'd like to see the written, I understand it.
Okay.
Yes.
And discussion on the main motion as amended by Councilmember Berry? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Mrs. Sang voting no.
Item five is Council Bill 29-2011. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 29-2011, an ordinance amending Chapters 5 and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning general code revisions and clarifications related to building development and improvements and required submissions and permits for the same. Existing ordinance require construction of public improvements adjacent to properties where new buildings are being constructed and significant additions are being added to existing buildings. Construction of public improvements is also required on new and adjacent existing streets when the property is subdivided. The proposed ordinance would reduce these requirements in many cases. Existing ordinances for grading permits require, with more than 50 cubic yards of dirt is excavate, whoa, excuse me. Existing ordinances require grading permits when more than 50 cubic yards of dirt is excavated or imported. The proposed ordinance would greatly reduce the required grading permits and, and then it goes on to say that Chapter 26 is not currently relative to the city's adopted survey NJIS side, and this ordinance corrects those deficiencies.
Any additional staff comment?
None.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number five? Don't rush up all at once. Councilmember, questions?
Need a number.
Sign an ordinance number, please.
It said it'll be 1503 for Council Bill 29-2011.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 29-2011, an ordinance amending Chapters 5 and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning general code revisions and clarifications relating to buildings, development, and improvements and required submissions and permits for the same on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council on item number five.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. We will move on to ordinances on first reading. Item six is Council Bill 31-2011. Councilmember Demont?
Council Bill Number 31-2011, an ordinance amending a combined outline and final development plan for property zoned planned industrial development located within the L&amp;K Industrial Park and specifically 10-700 West 50th Avenue, case number WZ1106, ATEX for T-Mobile. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 31-2011, an ordinance amending a combined outline and final development plan for property zoned planned industrial development located in the L&amp;K Industrial Park and specifically 10-700 West 50th Avenue, case number WZ1106, ATEX for T-Mobile. On first reading, order published, public hearing set for Monday, November 28, 2011, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item seven is Council Bill 32-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 32-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning regulation of massage therapy and massage parlors. Is the motion in order?
Uh, motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 32-2011, an ordinance approving the amendment of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of massage therapy and massage parlors on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, October 24, 2011, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers and that it will take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval on first reading, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item eight is Resolution 32-2011. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 32-2011, a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies, the amounts specified for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2012 budget year. I think that's self-explanatory.
A motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 37-2011, a resolution levying, a mill levy of, whoa, I skipped one.
Oh, you're on item number eight.
I skipped one.
Resolution 32-2011.
Thank you. Hang on. Try again. I move to approve Resolution Number 32-2011, a resolution adopting the city budget and purping sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies and the amounts specified for the city of Wheat Ridge of Colorado for the year 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on item eight from council? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item nine is Resolution 37-2011. Mr. Reinhardt?
Um, yes, Your Honor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 37-2011, a resolution levying general property taxes for the year 2011 to help defray the costs of government and for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the year 2012 budget year. Again, I assume that to be self-explanatory.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 37-2011, a resolution levying a mill levy of 1.830 on general property taxes for year 2011 to help defray the costs of government for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the year 2000, for the 2012 budget year.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number eight, nine, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council.
That carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item 10 is Resolution 39-2011. Councilmember Stites?
It's thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 39-2011, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for the widening of 32nd Avenue from Braun Court to Wright Court. Is the motion in order?
A motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 39-2011, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for the widening of 32nd Avenue from Braun Court to Wright Court.
Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion for approval of item number 10. It was seconded by Councilmember Adams. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. Item 11 is Resolution 41-2011. Councilmember Adams?
Resolution Number 41-2011, a resolution giving a contract with Colorado Department of Transportation for the widening of 32nd Avenue from Braun Court to Wright Court, Project Number 18528.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 41-2011, a resolution giving a contract with Colorado Department of Transportation for the widening of 32nd Avenue from Braun Court to Wright Court, Project Number 18528.
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number 11, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. Mr. Bruce, do you have all the amendments that you need from council members?
I, I'll get them from Mr. Doll regarding Mr. Reinhardt's and Ms. Berry. He's the only mirror, so.
Okay. So please, council members, give you those amendments to the city clerks so they can incorporate them properly into the minutes. So move on to city managers' matters?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple quick announcements, um, good announcements. Uh, our off-leash dog park has a grand opening scheduled for October 22nd. That's a Saturday, 10:00 AM. This is our new off-leash dog park at Fruitdale Park at 4725 Miller Street. Um, this park was completed in cooperation or conjunction with, or in support of the Wheat Ridge Rotary, a donation of $5,000 and the open space funds. So we're excited about that. And then also, we're excited about a groundbreaking which is scheduled for October 18th for the Metro Community Provider Network Facility, which is across the street from city hall here at 29th and Waz. A groundbreaking is scheduled for, again, October 18th at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
I have one, one item just to advise you of. I've been in contact with, uh, the city clerk, Michael Snow, on the, just various election matters since it's election season. Um, and we've needed to clarify, and I have clarified with him, the rules of the game for, um, how council members are elected and the clerk treasurer are elected in terms of what the standards are for that, in terms of voting, uh, the numbers of votes. And for council members, the default is to the statute, which says that if you have more candidates than offices, it's the, in each district, it's the, it's the highest vote. in each district, it's the, it's the highest vote getter that is deemed elected, and that you can probably understand. And that's really been the case in the city for a long time, not a surprise. Pardon me, but for clerk and treasurer races, the charter is specific in saying that the clerk and treasurer are elected by a majority of the electors. And so it's not the highest vote getter in the situation in which you have more than two candidates. Where you've only got two candidates for an office, one candidate, unless there's a tie, is going to get a majority of the, of the votes, even if it's 50.001%. That's a majority and they're, they're elected. But the charter's specific in saying that the clerk and treasurer are elected by a majority of the electors. And that means that where you have more than two candidates, and that's the case in the clerk race, it could be that one candidate will gain a majority of all the votes cast for that office, and that's how you measure it. If there are 100 votes cast for that office, the winning candidate has got to get 51 of them. And that, and that could well take place, and if that's the case, then we're done. But if no candidate receives a majority of the votes cast, then there would have to be a runoff election. And we haven't traditionally had those because it hasn't come up. But that would have to be the case. And this is not anything council has to take action on. Our charter is really clear. And, you know, it says, it's got a majority of the, of the electors. And so we would have to put together, and we're kind of getting ready in case we need to put together a little procedure for a runoff, and that would have to be a special election the council would call for a runoff. So I'm just letting you know that that's the case.
So would they all go again?
No, you'd have a runoff and you'd, you'd, you'd take the, probably the highest two, and, and that would be the, then you'd have a runoff election.
Can you give, can you give an example of they wouldn't get a majority? I mean, if someone gets 39% and everybody else is 21, 23, whatever, how does, it has to be 50%?
Majority of the, of the electors voting, if it's 100 votes, are cast.
Right.
And you have four candidates and they each get 25 votes. Now, I'm making it way too complicated, but if you get, if you have four candidates, two get 10 votes, and the other two get 40 each, no one has gotten a majority of the votes cast, have they? The number of votes cast is 100. What's a majority of 100? 51. So that's sort of how it is. That may not be what turns out to be, but I didn't want it to be a surprise for you or for the candidates or anyone. And, and talking with Michael, he's, we and I talked through this last week, and we agreed that I'd, I'd alert you to the fact that that's what the charter says. I know they're getting a lot of frowns, but if, you should frown at that book right here, not at me, because that's what the book says, and I can't make it say something easier.
No, I understand. If there's 100 votes cast and someone gets 39 votes, that's a majority.
Not a majority of the votes cast, is it? No different than here. Council's got to pass things by a majority, and if, you know, if there's not five, it doesn't pass, does it?
That's why you got five names in your company.
Four, 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 just, yeah. It's easier with four.
Anything else anymore?
That's the only news I have. Sorry to be a downer, but that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. City clerk?
Mr. City clerk, yes, speaking of elections, really quick, for those at home, the election is November 1st. It's mail ballot only. Jefferson County is mailing those out tomorrow. That's why we want to let everybody start looking for those in your mailbox. Really quick, you're only getting one if you were an active voter. Now, there's a lot of question on that, but what that means is you didn't vote in the '09 election. You can still vote, but you have to go to one of their service centers and get reactivated, if you will. And those service centers are at all their DMV locations. They can also go to votejeffco.com, do it there. And for everybody else, that votejeffco.com is pretty cool. You can check your status. You can track your ballots, so on and so forth. And as far as dropping off ballots, there, we have a box here. All city halls have them in the service centers.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Well, I would just like to reiterate that October 22nd is the make a difference day, and, and I think that it's a very important thing. And as citizens, if you don't want to be active by having to come to the council meetings, which I was very happy with as many people that did show up. But it's a good way to be part of your community and, and make a difference without having to do a lot of work and taking a night off. So I would hope that everybody takes a, a chance to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Jay.
I do have an announcement that's kind of fun. We're going to have, hopefully, an event on 38th Avenue, which is going to be called Trick or Trunk. Is that right?
Trunk or Treat.
Trunk or Treat. Trunk or Treat. This is new. I love Halloween, so let's hope that I can get this name right. It's going to be a community event. And let me read here real quick what the idea is. The trunk or treat in this event were cars parked in a lot, and we've got middle school aligned for that, and hard candy passed out to trick or treaters from a decorated trunk. It's supposed to be fun, safe, free, and family-friendly event. It will be October 29th, must be a Saturday, is that right? Between 5:00 and 8:00 PM. And we do need some volunteers for that, both to organize it as well as direct traffic. And Chad Har is, and Chad and Kim Har are our contact information at 303-489-5728, as well as 2020. It's be between 5:00 and 8:00 PM on October 29th. Yeah, it's called, what is this called?
Trunk or Treat.
Trunk or Treat. Sounds fun.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Sang? Mr. Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I got to do my spiel. It's a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, talk to one of us or staff. Please try to do a positive thing, either for your family, your neighbors. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Mr. Demont?
Thank you. Yeah, I do have something, some exciting news. Some people have been coming and curious of what's going on on 40th, 44th Avenue at the gun shop. I'm happy to share my excitement for the premiere tonight of their new reality show on the Discovery Channel, featuring one of Wheat Ridge's businesses, Gunsmoke. The show, called American Guns, will be on every Monday at 8:00. It's an hour-long show, and it showcases what true entrepreneurial spirit and a lot of hard work can do in a city like Wheat Ridge. Gunsmoke has been in business in Wheat Ridge since way back in the 1900s, as their sign says. I would like to wish the Wyatt family all the success in the world and thank them, along with Gurney Production Company and the Discovery Channel for putting Wheat Ridge on a weekly national program. And I urge you all to check out the show and see how your city looks on national television. We missed it, obviously, by far, but you probably see a repeat. It's on at 1:00 again if you would like to stay up till 1:00 AM.
Sure, sure.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Berry?
Just a quick, I discussed this a little earlier, but I attended the, the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee meeting, and in the middle of that, I found out, or think that there's a glitch in, in one of these existing state statutes that may make it illegal for us to provide free Wi-Fi in council chambers. We could provide it wholesale, but we can't provide it free. And it's, it's a silly thing, and it happens with, it affects libraries also. But I'd like Mr. Dahl to look into that and, and kind of let us know if whether we're violating state statutes by providing free wireless service in the council chambers.
I'm of the opinion that certain state statutes should be violated, but you know, that's.
Well, the reason why we were discussing it at the policy committee was to try to fix that, so that you could, we could do so. But it'd be first to figure it out.
Thank you. The last thing I just wanted to mention real quickly is you have this proposal in front of you. I met with Gina and this organization a couple weeks ago, and they were looking for a location in, hopefully, Wheat Ridge. And I had mentioned to them that we could probably talk to the Jefferson County School District about using Wheat Ridge Middle School. They needed an area that was 160 feet by 160 feet for the Zoppi Italian Family Circus, which if we're trying to promote 38th Avenue, having some kind of event like this during the Carnation Festival or before the Carnation Festival or sometime in the, the community, this is an excellent idea to maybe perhaps promote the city of Wheat Ridge as a destination. And so what I'd like to do is, does anybody like to sponsor this, to put on a study session here within the next 60 days? Because they need to actually know in January or that, you know, close after the January, to know if they can actually be in Wheat Ridge, because they'll make their plans based on that. Does anybody have a?
Special use permit?
Well, no, it's, it's just the whole idea. We got to get, we got to contact the school district. We want to be able to, no, it'd be on school property, too, but the city has to be involved for logistics, so.
Well, yeah, my question would be, I mean, if they, they need some sort of a land use permit, is it going to be quasi judicial and can, I mean, I just want to make sure we follow whatever rules we need to follow, if it's going to be some sort of a, a permit we need to give.
For a, for a study session context, you're, you're fine looking at sort of what the parts and pieces would be. If one of them turns out to be, they need to apply for a special use permit, you know, it doesn't become quasi judicial until they've filled out and filed that application.
So does anybody have any problem if this gets added to like December or January study session? Cool. Mr. Goff?
You can have mine. I got one at home.
Where's your?
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.